All right. We'll start the meeting and if everybody could just make sure that they speak into the microphones because we're videotaping this. The lady that's, Mary Ann, is gonna do the notes from the video. So she has to hear what we have to say. So, all right. So this is the Planning Board meeting of November 9th, 2021. If we could please stand for the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And this proceeding is videotaped and will be rebroadcast by Area 58 TV. So the first thing we have before us tonight is a minor modification. This was continued from our last meeting. And this was 96 Forest Street, EJCP LLC, Eric Pontiff, to modify approved site plan to allow owner to combine four bays in a five-bay rear building to lease to tenant of front building. So this is, I'm hoping we have a bunch of hearings tonight. And I'm hoping to conclude these hearings tonight. Because without a planner, if we can get this done, and hopefully a planner, we may have a new planner, hopefully in a few weeks, if we could get this old business off the table and so that we could have a new business, that the planner will take care of them when they get here. So, so this is, 96 Forest Street is an existing two buildings. And it's Nutrient is the front building. And we had a rear building in the back. And at the time that we approved this, it was to be a five-bay craftsmen-tradesmen. But since then, they have come before us about a modification to the plan to allow four bays to become storage area for Nutrient for the front building. And there would be a fifth bay in the rear to be leased as a craftsmen-tradesmen building. Now, I've spoken to the building inspector that we have, and he said that this was all right to do. It was, he considered it a secondary use to the main building. So it was, it's, it's, it's an allowable use of this building. Now, I know that at the last meeting, there was a discussion about the elimination of the, of the craftsmen-trade men bays. And so I've been thinking about it, and I just want to share some thoughts with the Planning Board and the people out here, is that we, you know, this, you know, hopefully this will allow Nutrient to continue its operation. I mean, they have people working at that building, too. We do have two in another project unassociated with this, but there are other buildings and even beside this site that have craftsmen-tradesmen buildings. And we even have a new proposal that's coming to us tonight with another craftsmen-tradesmen building in South Carver. So it seems like we have a lot of craftsmen-tradesmen buildings that we have in town. And so I don't think that this is gonna really hurt any kind of job opportunities for people in town, this one particular building. And it may keep Nutrient, you know, hopefully that they can stay here and continue to do their business with this use in the rear building. So, to me, I try to help businesses in town so that they don't fail and they continue to thrive. But that's my opinion. We do have, I have mailed out some conditions that went along with this. And I don't know if everybody's been able to review them. These aren't etched in concrete yet. They're, they were conditions that were put out there, but I imagine there'll be a little further discussion about this project before we go to the conditions. I don't know if there's anything that Mr. Pontiff or any of the people with him would like to say.
Thank you Chairman Mackey, and good evening, everyone. Rob Dambroso, Dambroso Law and Plymouth. Yeah, I think we'll just maybe make some brief remarks, and of course, we'd be interested in what the proposed conditions are. So Eric, if you want to advance a couple slides, you know, looks like, looks like the stars are aligning in terms of approval from various town bodies. But again, just to kind of reiterate what we're here for, you know, we certainly believe this to be a minor modification. It's the removal of three demising walls. You know, the project is substantially otherwise identical to what was proposed initially. We've got two structures and allowed uses in the general business zone. The portion of the building that Nutrient is proposing to use, the rear building that's at issue here, is consistent with complementary to, and importantly, your zoning enforcement officer himself pointed out that it is accessory to the use in the front building. So again, two allowed uses, one accessory to the other, just removing a couple of walls. And then that remaining 20% roughly of the rear building, you know, will be, as originally envisioned, a craftsmen-tradesmen unit for Mr. Pontiff's building and development business. Eric, you can go to the next slide, please. You know, not to tell you something you're aware of, but again, at this point, we've got the fire department and the building commissioner, they've weighed in on the alarm issue. We think we've, you know, diffused it, so to speak. Doesn't seem to be, you know, our case always was that it's not needed by code. And we're pleased that the town bodies are on board with our analysis. And again, I know that the issue of spill containment has come up. You know, just to reiterate, you know, these are not high hazard materials. We've created a manifest of materials that'll be stored, that's been supplied in connection with the original 2019 permitting. The fire department has it. And again, those materials that are to be stored are agricultural materials, you know, fertilizer, fungicide, you know, and the like, but they're not considered quote-unquote "high hazard" materials within the definition of the state building code. And the code doesn't require spill containment. You know, as you know, Nutrient was glad to put it in the front building. And again, that's the more active building. This is a much smaller rear building. It's accessory to the front building, it's storage, and there's not going to be any retail traffic, you know, and very limited foot traffic. So, you know, it's, it's a different scenario in the rear building and a different use. I mean, Nutrient certainly is as focused on safety as anyone else, from both a liability protection standpoint and just a good corporate citizenship standpoint. You know, and again, I just want to reiterate, and then I'll kind of close my remarks, there's not a lot to it, but, you know, I hope everyone, when you vote tonight and consider the proposed conditions, will consider the fact that, you know, we think we're a lot better off than the old Nutrient site. You know, this is a local business that supplies local businesses and, you know, you get a lot of farmers, community farmers, using this on a regular basis. And we've taken it out of residential zone, we've got it in a commercial zone where it really belongs. And we've got it away from the wetlands. So we've got a good site, we've got a sound site with good safety practices, and, you know, we think it's proceeding as expected. Eric, there's just a couple more here. Again, just so you know, you know, I think obviously, Mr. Mackey, you've got this, but that's an email excerpt from Paul Boucher indicating that this is accessory. You can go to the next one, Eric. This is an email from Paul, you know, after having spoken with Jesse that, you know, no alarm required, which again, we touched on, and then I think there's one more slide, Eric, which is from Jesse himself, indicating that, you know, we do not need the building to be alarmed. So again, we were hopeful that you'll approve our minor modification tonight, and we'd love to get this off your plate, along with everything else you're hoping to dispense with tonight. Thank you.
Just want to tell the board members, I spent a lot of time in town hall this week. I've talked to the building commissioner, I've talked to Jim Walsh. And at first, when we were looking at this, I thought, the fire department, I guess, was asking for the fire alarm system, but the fire alarm system is not required. It, like was explained by Attorney Dambroso, that it was, it was done in the front building, but it's not really required by law. As far as the containment system, you know, I first thought, there is a containment in the first building, but again, it's not required by law. It was done by Nutrient, just because that's what they do with their, their buildings to, when they build them, but it's not required by law. So I talked to the building inspector about this, too, and he said, you know, neither the fire alarm or the containment is required by law. So, I mean, I just, I just leave it up to the planning board members. I kind of had mixed feelings about this, but the more I thought about it, I just want to ask a question, is you're gonna, the materials that you store in the front building, are they gonna be the exact materials that you're gonna store in the rear building also? Do you know, or are they gonna be different type of material?
Yeah, so they've committed to store the more, you know, liquid materials, all in the front building that's containment. Anything stored in the back would be dry material. And, you know, the corporate policy that they have is, you know, they have 3,000 locations across the country, and the corporate policy requires that of them as a branch. So not only, you know, if we were to condition that through the special permit, whether we did that or not, that's their policy from a corporate perspective. So I think that, you know, they are a, you know, a long-term company that has had a lot of experience with this, and they're making their own decisions that they feel are protections, you know, for their liability as a company.
So I'll just throw this out to the planning board. If we condition this approval for a site plan modification, and we condition it with liquid material to be stored in the front building and only dry chemicals to be stored or stored in the rear building, I think that may, wouldn't, we wouldn't have to have the containment there. I don't think we need the fire alarm system. I mean, looking at, at the laws, I don't know if we really need it in this building. And probably not the containment if we, if we put that into the conditions. I don't know how other members feel about this.
Can I say something?
Sure, Rich, yep.
So I wasn't hearing that this project was designed or anything, but, you know, from what I understand, the way it was presented to the board was, you wanted to put Agway in there, one big building. You couldn't do it because it was gonna cost too much money for the fire apparatus and all that. So you decided to go with a tradesman building and outback, smaller building, correct?
I think that the plans that were submitted were always for two buildings. Is that incorrect? I wasn't involved in 2019.
Well, I'm, like I said, what I'm trying to understand here is, from information I got, not saying it's true or not, but what I'm saying is, Agway was gonna be one big building, correct?
Well, given the fact that, you know, if there was enough water pressure, we were gonna do sprinklers in the building, do a bigger building than 7,500 square feet, and give them more square footage. But because we weren't able to, we were, we went to two buildings. But Nutrient all along was only gonna be in the front building, and the craftsmen-tradesmen were gonna be in the back.
Correct. And this is the point I'm getting at.
Right. So there was never an intention in the beginning, though, for Nutrient to take the back building. So this is a whole new change.
Correct. So what I'm trying to say is, on the application, this is how we got the tradesman building in there, is front building, tradesman building.
Correct.
Now you're in there, and the building's too small for Agway, correct?
Well, I think they've had a really busy year, and they've realized that that location is very good for them. So I think that's why they wanted to expand. They also realized that having control of the entire site was beneficial to their business.
Right. So what I'm trying to get, so the point I'm basically getting at is, by taking that tradesman building out of there, any future, future building, and people want to put tradesman buildings in, and once they're put up, decide, hey, Agway did it, why can't we do it? Let's ask for a special permit, we'll get rid of the tradesman building. The whole purpose of tradesman building, you know, there's a purpose for it, not, not just to build it, to say it's a tradesman, then when everything's done, let's get a minor modification and do away with it. You're still gonna put the same amount of materials in that building as if it was the big building itself, it's just you're getting away from all the fire apparatus.
No, your, your point's well taken. And again, if this were a premeditated two stepper, I'd agree with you. I think that, you know, what I would point out to this board, so let's say that, you know, you're of the mind, and maybe you are, maybe you aren't, that this is not a minor modification, and, and that you wouldn't have approved this, you know, you wouldn't have approved the proposed use if that was what was presented in 2019 for the sake of argument. I think, and again, coupled with what the zoning enforcement officer has said, this would be an accessory use. So if we had presented it in this fashion in 2019, with a retail use and an accessory use, I mean, we still have two allowed uses in the zone. So, you know, I, things change, again, things change for a variety of reasons, but I'm not, you know, I guess the question is, would it have resulted in a different outcome?
What are the two uses?
Pardon?
What are the two uses there?
Well, we have a retail use, and then we have an accessory retail use in the back. I mean...
I would consider that both the same, you know, just storage, you know?
No, I mean, I agree, but retail's allowed in the general business district.
So instead of having five different businesses, say, we go on top of one.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree, but, you know, again, both allowed uses within the general business district, so I don't think, and again, I don't know how the board would vote now or then, but I wouldn't think there'd be an issue with putting two retail uses, one accessory to the other, in the general business district.
Anybody else have anything to say? I mean, I've gone over this with the building inspector. I remember, oh God, I mean, this has been going on for years now, but I, when it first came to us, it was, the Agway was gonna be moved here, and I think it was gonna be one building, and that went on for a year or two, and they just didn't have the funds to move the building. But then I think, because the building may have been larger, once a building is a certain size, it requires sprinklers, a sprinkler system. So this went on for like two years or more, and then, and then it came, and then all of a sudden, it came up again at another meeting, and it was gonna be two buildings. And, and by doing this, by doing two buildings, yeah, you can avoid the sprinkler system because they're, they're under, they're, they're under the square footage that requires a sprinkler system. I mean, that's the law, I mean, that's just the way it is, you know?
And I understand that. But what I'm getting at is, if you were to say, all right, because it's, it's too much money for the sprinkler system, we're just gonna put up two buildings, and this is what it's gonna be.
Well, I think...
The board could have went a different way and said, no. But when they presented it as a tradesman building, it changes everything, you know what I'm saying? And now you want to take it away.
Well, I guess it does.
And I understand, you know, the building department, they're all just telling you, yeah, it's fine, if that's what you want to decide, but it's up to the board, what would decide.
No, 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 but I'm, I'm just saying it's an allowable use.
No, and I understand.
You know, it's an allowable use.
You know, future down the line, you get people building these buildings, and they want to do a tradesman building. Don't need them to change, you know, just because...
It has to be in the right area, it has to be in the right zoning district to do it.
Because, you know, minor modification, be changing the door, changing some windows around, you're knocking out three walls in there, you know? Really a minor modification?
Well, generally alterations to the inside of the building, I mean, a major modification would be to, something that would alter the drainage, and so be, you know, a drainage study, or the parking lots, or the paving areas. But, I mean, we've done minor modifications to buildings like Mamma Mias, they, they, they had an outside dining outside the restaurant, and then they changed it into, they covered that outside dining, and they made it part of the building. And they came to us as a minor modification, or modification to the site plan. So we allowed that. Yeah, there are things that come up, you know, solar fields that are large, and they're not changing the footprint of the solar field, but they may move a component of the solar field that would be considered a minor modification to the plan. So there, there are things. I mean, here, we're not changing any of the drainage, we're not changing the footprint of the project, we're not changing the parking areas, we're not, we're not doing that. There is, I mean, in this, in the parking area, they do have an entrapment, catch basin two to catch any kind of pollutants that go onto the pavement. And, so, but I mean, that, that's just a minor modification. I mean, you know, just, you know, if they were gonna change, like I say, the size of the building, and they were gonna put additions on, and they were gonna change the parking and stuff like that, then that would be, that would be different. And, you know, to the, to the history of the planning board, anyway, from what I've seen, from what we've, what we've dealt with. I see, this isn't a public hearing, but I'll let Mr. Sinclair speak. Having been part of the planning board, if you could just do it briefly, Will.
So Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. William Sinclair, 5 Lillian Way. I sat on this proposal that came in front of this board and in front of this community. This gentleman right here is right on target. The initial proposal for, for Agway was to go to Marion Way. Their initial proposal was to go up there, one Marion Way. And they came in front of this board, did a presentation, they went away. Then they, then they came to Mr. Pontiff's property. They came in with the initial proposal was for one large building, so that way they could move all their activities there. To get underneath the 7,500 square foot fire requirement, they went to two buildings, and this is where I have a problem. When they went to the two buildings, they, they designed a craftsmen-tradesmen designation for the back buildings. Front building was gonna be the commercial retail, which is both allowed in the, in the business district, as we all know, but two totally separate designations of type of businesses that were going in those buildings. That's what was sold to the planning board, that was, was sold to the public. How the board considers this a minor modification, I'll lay that on your shoulders, because I don't see it. The new building commissioner claims that this is a, is a use that is allowed in the, in the zone. It is. That's perfect. I understand that. It is allowed in the zone. Fire department determined that there's no fire system required in that, in that smaller building. Yeah, I get that. That's the law. But if the initial proposal was to be one, one entity of business retail for both buildings, no commercial tradesmen, I know for a fact that when they got passed on the board that I sat on, and what was presented to us, the selling point was gonna be a dual use on that site. Now, for one who's been on, on the planning board for a lot of years, 20 years, business district, water district, been very well involved in this community, always was pro-business in this town, I can tell you one thing, if Agway's successful up there, that's a great thing for Agway. If Mr. Pontiff is the property owner and, and reaps the benefits of his investment, that's what we do in America. But don't come in front of the town and tell me that this is a minor modification when it's not. There was two specific selling points on how they were designing this property. And them are the facts. Go back and look at the tapes. You want to do a minor modification? It's your purview. You are the sitting planning board, I don't know how you do it. You're changing the use from craftsmen-tradesmen to business retail. Thank you. And I do appreciate you guys allowing me to speak.
May I briefly respond to that?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so again, you know, Mr. Sinclair raised some good points, sounds like he'd like to still be on the board, maybe, but, you know, the...
No.
But again, you know, I think Chairman Mackey mentioned a bunch of ways that it could be considered minor. I mean, we've got no structural exterior alterations, we've got, you know, less impact on parking, traffic, you know, same drainage profile, et cetera. So there's a number of ways you could certainly consider this to be a minor modification. You know, more to the point, how does it benefit the town of Carver to constrict Agways or Nutrient AGs' growth and success? I mean, you know, I think we're losing the forest for the trees a little bit here, guys. This is a minor modification. Three interior demising walls are coming out, you know, and we've got an allowed use in this zone. You know, we're not trying to put in an adult video store. You know, I mean, this is not, you know, we're not flaunting the zoning bylaw, and for the record, there was only ever filed, to my knowledge, with this planning board, a set of plans that contemplated two buildings. There wasn't one building proposed that got denied, and then we came back with two. That's just not accurate. So again, you know, we'd just appreciate the board's consideration.
All right. Does anybody else have anything to say?
I tend to agree that the change of use classification is a modification, whether it's, it's a major modification or a modification, it's still a modification. I don't believe it's a minor modification in keeping with the true and original decision of the planning board. I do not see that the benefits of this project outweigh the proposed benefits of tradesman craftsmen's building. And should this board feel it be allowed that the classification of this building should be changed to accessory use, and the craftsmen-tradesmen should be pulled from the usage?
Yeah, I didn't quite understand that. So they're gonna use, they're gonna, they're gonna use a portion of the building or what the proposed use is, for what used to be four bays will be used as an accessory use to the, to the front building?
Yes, yes.
And then, and then the fifth bay will be a craftsmen-tradesmen space?
Is the building a craftsmen-tradesmen building, or is it an accessory use? Because now...
Part of it's gonna be accessory, and part of it's gonna be craftsmen-trade men, you know, a small portion.
Well, you can't keep both classifications. It's either an accessory use, or it's a craftsmen-tradesmen use.
I mean, all I, all I can do is, and I have not taken this lightly, you know, I've talked to the building inspector, and, who's had many years in many towns, and has gone over the bylaws, we've sat down, we've looked at this together, and he says, as an accessory use to the main building, this is a, a use that's allowable.
Then we should change the classification to accessory use. That's... That's, that's the point that I'm trying to get at. Maybe you can keep one craftsman tradesman bay on the end of it, but if you're changing this. For the reasons that they're changing it, which I don't agree with, and I don't think this is more beneficial. Or that the benefits outweigh the negatives in this regard, then the classification of the building should revert to uh accessory use. Or the four bays out of the five bays should be. Changed to the classification of accessory use and therefore tied to the future uses of the, of the front building. As was maybe what um. Originally, I believe that this was uh, in some sense, to be used by the Agway building from the beginning.
I don't know. I mean, you, you can't second guess people and.
Well, I'm not second guessing.
Are trying to do things that aren't allowed. I mean, what they're doing is, is allowed.
Yes, and that's why I'm, right, so why not, let's, if if this is what is being requested and I don't agree with it. Then the classification of, of the four units in that building should be changed to accessory use. As is requested by the proponent of this.
Okay, so, so would you be happy if that was written into the decision?
No, I do, I, I think that it should be written into the procedure if this board sees fit to pass this particular. Particular um, project, but frankly, I don't see that the positives on this project outweigh the negatives and and.
Well, there's a, there's another thing I'm concerned with, is that um. You know, I've talked to the professionals. I mean, that's, that's all I can do. That's all I can do. Um, and, and, and they said that this was. I mean, I know the history of the project and, and, you know, I'm not taking lightly what Mr. Sinclair has said. But I have talked to the, the two professional people that, that we work with. Interpreted the bylaw and they said that this was all right to use as a secondary use. And they thought that it was a minor modification. That's, that's all I can do.
I'm not arguing that point. Uh, it is allowed, but I think some other clarifications need to be made in that respect.
I can understand that. Okay, we can do that. Um, the other thing is, is that I'm just concerned now about. That if we, if we turn this down as a minor modification, that we wouldn't be looking at. We could be looking at a lawsuit, you know, and I just don't want to get into, to something like that. Um, I'm not saying that it's going to happen, but you just never know. And with the information that I've gotten from the building inspector, I. I'm just, you know, wondering if, if, if that would go good for the town. So.
I don't think this board should be concerned about what sort of uh. Legal actions might be taken either by the town or by the proponents of any project. I think we have to do what we feel is in the best interest of the town. The courts give a lot of leeway to the planning board to interpret any of their decisions in the interests of the town. And I, I don't think that a lawsuit in any way, shape or form should in any way impact the decision. That this planning board is going to make. They haven't mentioned lawsuits, nobody's mentioned lawsuits. And it, regardless of whether they did or not, it is not something to be taken into consideration. When trying to make decisions on what is in the best interest of the town and residents of the town of Carver.
Well, the only reason I say that is, is when I get an opinion that this is an allowed use.
Nobody's arguing that it's allowed or not.
Then, and, and if it's voted the other way and we get tied up in court with this, then. I, I'm just saying, I understand, you know, everybody wants the best for Carver, but you have to go by. The rules and regulations of the planning board and, and the laws that we have in place in town here, so.
Right, and nobody's arguing that it's not allowed, Bruce. That's not, that's not the issue here. It's a change of classification for the use and whether it's beneficial to the town or not.
Okay.
Could I just make a point of information about the potential change in classification? An accessory use is not a use within the um, with the zoning bylaws use table. An accessory use, it's a, it's a one sentence line in the zoning bylaw, section twenty-two forty. Any use permitted as a principal use, which in this case would be retail, that's permitted in the general business district, and that's what the building inspector's saying. Is also allows an accessory use. So, you know, you, I just don't think, you know, from my perspective, take it for what it's worth. I don't think there is such a classification as accessory. You know, craftsman tradesman's a classification, retail's a classification. Accessory is not a classification. So, if you decide that it's accessory.
Tradesman craftsmen is a classification.
Correct, yes, but I'm saying, I think, and, and maybe it was, it's just linguistics, maybe, but I don't think it's. Accurate to say that this is classified as accessory under the use table. It's accessory to the use of the front building, but, you know, we would be within a retail use category.
Potentially, yes.
Just for what it's worth.
So, could we write in the decision that uh, in that rear building? One bay will be uh, for craftsmen tradesmen and then the four will be. Uh, four others will be of secondary use to the main building?
Yeah, I would, I would call them retail because they're accessory to retail.
Accessory retail, retail, would, would that work for you? Mr. Shea?
Again, I don't feel that the benefits of this project outweigh the negative effects, but I am, if this board sees fit to pass it. Then that, that is what I would recommend.
So, so if I may, other than the general proposition that, that Mr. Dion and, and Mr. Sinclair made, that they feel that, you know. It's not appropriate to change uses, I, I just don't understand what the, you know, the, the, to your point, what is the negative um, to this use?
We're a blue collar town. Again, when this was approved, it was approved under craftsman tradesmen, of which I believe somewhere in the seventy-eight percentage of this town is made up of. Um, and, and that does have a vast and important impact on, on the residents of this town.
Right, I mean, I, you know, I respectfully say that I think agriculture is probably the biggest uh, industry in this town. And, and this services, again, this services the local community. This is not a, you know. Distribution center for goods that are shipped to other towns. I mean, this is all sold locally, you know, again, so.
And we're not, we're, we're not saying it's not. What we're saying is. You have one business over there, tradesman craftsmen building, there's five more businesses going in there.
So you think tradesmen craftsmen are better?
You know, you got Three Month Street down there, it's a little craftsman building, the five businesses, you know, you got a detailer.
Right.
You, you got a heating guy down there and so forth.
Well, you, you also have eleven craftsman tradesman units coming online, possibly tonight if you approve the other adjacent projects, so, you know. But I understand.
If you could just make it quick, please, give us your name and.
I have a question for you. So, if they needed more storage and you can drive around town, you can see people have the storage containers, the car outs boxes. Wouldn't you rather know what you're getting than have people put storage containers and not know what's in it? Because they don't have to come in front of you to put storage containers on their property.
They, they do if it's there for any longer than, I think it's ninety days.
Going around and putting stickers on and making sure people do?
Oh, I, I think that anybody could complain about it. I can assure you that I keep an eye on all projects. Right, well, that's, that's why I'm offering that maybe the classification should be changed in regards to this. But I don't feel that the benefits outweigh the negative aspects and the potential for jobs and growth in this town.
Well, my thoughts are, I, I wouldn't want a, a business that just started, that has a building there. Not grow and, and possibly leave because they don't have. Enough room for their business to grow. So, yeah, I can understand, you, you have five bays, you're losing four. You have one business that'll be there, but then you have the other store and it, this back building is going to support that store that's already there. I mean, if they have to go, then you have two buildings that will be empty. So. I don't know what more we can say about this.
Do you mind me asking, why are you modifying it for, are you modifying it for the use of? A forklift in there? I, I mean, why, why can't they use the bays as, as is?
So that's certainly an option and probably, you know, as we went down this road, I didn't think that this process was going to be. As, you know, to use the word difficult, as difficult as it is. I, I didn't, you know, having, as an applicant or a landowner. When you build a building, you, you know, you read through the zoning and you look at all the allowed uses that you could potentially use your building for, within the zoning code. It never crossed my mind that, you know, switching from one allowed use to the other allowed use would be as difficult as it is. So, you know, this is slightly perplexing to me. And certainly if the solution is Eric put up the walls and let them be in there. The use is the same, but there's walls, so I, I don't, it seems like a, a double logic to me, right? We could, if it's okay to do it with walls there, then tell me that's what you want me to do. Because that's better for me, because then I have the alternative to go back to the craftsman tradesman if they didn't.
Well, I think that's, I think that's the point everybody's trying to get to, is that it was presented that way. It was presented as five bays. And I understand and respect the fact that they are growing and they're going to take four of those bays.
Right.
Honestly, I would probably vote yes on it, but I don't see the need for you to have a minor modification. Because I don't look at it as a minor modification when you're reoften, when you're altering the inside of the structure. You know, it, it's, it is what it is. It's already up and the walls are there. And you're basically here before us because you're looking to take the walls down.
Well, we didn't frame the walls because, um, you know, as the building got built, they began the discussions that they potentially wanted four of those bays. So we didn't build the walls. We made the assumption that if they're going to take the four, they would want access between them. But I'm cer- I'm certain that they could operate with the walls as well. Obviously, it's additional cost to build those walls. And we would certainly do that if that solved anybody's issues here. I just, I didn't think the definition of the walls was the debatable issue here. If it is, then that's certainly fine.
No, my, that was just my personal question as to why uh. I didn't realize that the walls weren't built. I thought this was built as a, as a five storage uh, facility. I didn't realize. No, I.
You're not knowing. Yeah, no, I, I mean.
What do you think I should do?
I mean, it's, we're, we're at the mercy of the board here. I mean, you know, we, you know, we, we're trying to work with you, you know, I mean. You know, again, we're not, no one's trying to pull a fast one here.
And I respect the fact that the business is growing and I'm glad to see the business growing. The problem that all of us are having getting around is that this. If you were to take the, the business up the other end of town, uh, where you've got five bays. Um, is it going to come to a, one day that somebody's going to take over the whole entire building? I mean, I can see you using it for two uses because you yourself are staying in there. Um, however, I, it was brought to the board as five units and that's what, that's where I'm having a problem with.
He's saying that Nutrien can rent the four as long as they're.
I mean, yeah, that seems to be Mr. Robinson's perspective that, I mean, you know.
And that's my perspective, exactly.
You know, I was wondering, um, as far as like square footage between um, the previous building and this. Is there more, less?
No, the footprint of the structure is not changing. The, the dimensions, the height, I mean, the only change is internal, just, I mean, again. Arguably to not construct the three internal walls so that you have a larger, you know, single unit, I would call it, but. No, I mean, there, there's really no, no change to the topography, to the drainage, to the grading, to the site.
Will they be able to have more or less of that product that they are storing there?
Well, I mean, right now, they don't, they don't store anything there, so, you know, for them, this is, you know, I mean, they're, they're, again, they're, we've got a successful local business here. Uh, you know, so, you know, they're looking for additional storage. I mean, if they had a larger building, they'd keep it all within, you know. A lot of buildings have a storefront and then a rear. Again, in this case, particularly for folks concerned about the volume of uh, material stored there. I, I would think it's a good thing to segregate some of it, but.
So is it the boards? Um, would the board prefer it, that the walls are constructed so that it could switch back to craftsman tradesman if it needed to?
I, I believe that, that the usage is going to change and therefore if you want to change it back to craftsman tradesman, you can come back and. Fill out an application for that, but right now you're asking to change it to accessory use retail. And I think that's what the purpose and use of that building should be defined as. You can't eat your cake and have it too. It's going to be classified as one thing or the other, I believe, and, and that as, is as how it should be.
I mean, look, I think that's, I, I can't, you know, I think that's okay with us. Because it seems like folks on this board at least, and who knows what the board will be like in five years if Nutrien can't succeed in this location, but. You know, maybe you'll be in favor of a return to craftsman tradesman and, you know. But, yeah, so I don't think we have an issue with what Mr. Shea is saying. Or with what Mr. Robinson had to say.
All right. I mean, I'm just thinking too, if you have craftsman tradens, tradesmen in there, you, you. You, you don't know what really people are, are storing in, in, in those bays either. I mean. But I think in order to help this business and help it grow, I, I. I, I just, I just, I think that it's good that uh, they, they can expand. I mean. And I don't think this is any more dangerous than anything else that would go in there. Especially if you wanted to write into the decision that if they could just store the dry, dry materials in the rear building. And uh, any liquid materials would be in the front building.
Well, by law, they can't, they can't put anything in that building that uh, would require a sprinkler system. That's the point.
Well, I think this is.
Doesn't have a sprinkler system.
Right, sprinkler system goes by size.
Legally store anything in there.
Yeah, the sprinkler system goes by size.
I'm looking at it as though there, this is being done for convenience, for them to move around their equipment in this large. In the larger capacity without the walls. So, my problem is, is that it's not a minor modification. You know, um, I, I agree with Mr. Shea that it, it is not a craftsman tradesman building if you're not going to put them in. Because it is what it is. It's basically storage and that's what they're doing. But they could be renting it as storage and putting it in and everything would stay the same with the walls up. So, I have a problem with the language. And the language to me doesn't say that it's a minor modification. I'm okay with the project. I'm okay agreeing that this is good for the business to grow. That the materials that aren't going to go in there aren't going to require a fire suppression system. But I don't know how we get around. I, I want legal counsel to tell me how we get around the fact that. A minor modification is not the altering the language of what the building was in the first place that we agreed on.
That, that's going to take a while, but like I said, I went to the building inspector. And according to the rules and regulations that we have, it was a twenty-two forty, this is an allowable use. And I'm sure that legal counsel would say the same thing. So I, I.
I'm fine as long as counsel is going to back that up.
It's an allowed use, but that's not, that's, that's not saying a whole lot. I mean, right now we're under special permits. It wasn't the use, if you added this square footage to the main building, it would fall under completely different fire code regulations. And I, I have, I have issues with that too, but regardless.
No, they, but you don't do it that way. It's building by building. I mean, we went through that at um. At uh, the mosquito place, oh dear, um, where the buildings were separated. Because if the buildings, the front building and the new rear building and back were combined. That would uh, go over the, the sprinkler size. Uh, so they didn't want to sprinkle the buildings, so they separated the buildings. And it's allowable by law. It's, that's all I can say. It's allowable by law. And it's allowable by law. It's, that's all I can say. It's allowable by law. So I mean, you know, I mean, they're not going through the back door. They're not doing anything sneaky. It's allowable by law. If it's, if it's allowable by law, the buildings are separated, the right distances from one another and they're under the sprinkler, uh, size, then they don't have to put sprinklers in. I mean, it's all governed by laws.
Okay.
I mean, then, I mean, you may, you may feel personally that it shouldn't be, but that's.
I'm not arguing with you that it's an allowed usage. I'm arguing that we are changing what the allowed usage is to something that is completely different. We're not, I mean, we're not changing a restaurant to a, a chemical manufacturing facility, but regardless, we are changing the basic structure of that property by any changed usage.
We're changing the plan that was presented to us.
Well, they're, they're, they're changing, they're changing, they're changing the usage, but it's still an allowed usage. You know, it's, I, I, it's, it's allowed by law. I mean, you may feel that you don't like it personally, but by law, it's.
You know, I support Agway. I buy a lot of stuff from that guy up there. I have no.
Well, it isn't Agway now. It's what's called Nutrien, yeah.
Yeah. That's not it. What I'm trying to say is it was presented as a building and a tradesman building. Nutrien just opened up. They, they haven't even been open for a year and you're already changing a tradesman building.
Right. And as a secondary building on the lot, it falls under, in, as a commercial use, it, it falls under other laws other than 2240.
So what I'm trying to get is if it was presented as two storage buildings, what could've said no to it because they didn't want two storage buildings? But when you present a tradesman building, everyone thinks of adding more business to the town and you're gonna agree to it. And then when you do it, you wanna change it back to a storage building.
Well, the only, the only other thing is, is that, okay, so you say, we're not gonna do the minor mod. So then they would have to go back and have to do a full site plan. You'd have to, you'd, you'd have to go back for another special permit for probably site plan review and two buildings on a lot. It would all come out to the same thing, but it would just drag on and cost the applicant a, a lot of money to, to redo all this stuff. See, the thing is, is you can, you can approve this as a minor mod or it, it, it would probably be approved no matter what we do. If, if you go through the whole process all over again.
You might have to go to the ZBA because section 2245 dimensional regulation accessory uses says garage, tool shed, shops, wellhouses shall not exceed a floor area of 700 square feet.
I don't wanna go, I don't want everything to go to the ZBA.
Right.
I mean, we've had cases, we've got one case that went to court and we went, we had another case that's going to the, that went to the ZBA. Well, we, you thought was gonna go to the ZBA and it didn't go to the ZBA because it was determined that the ZBA had no jurisdiction over, over that. So, um, to say that everything's gonna be cured by the ZBA, I mean.
No, no, I'm not saying that. But if I wanted to build an accessory structure to my house that exceeded 700 square feet, I wouldn't be in front of the planning board. I'd be in front of the ZBA.
But I, I think you're talking about residential, right? That's a.
It says dimensional regulation accessory uses 2245 under the title of accessory buildings and uses. And it says garages, and 2245 C says garages, tool sheds, shops, wellhouses and the likes shall not exceed a floor area of 700 square feet.
Yeah, but the, but the beginning of 2245 says structural may be within required yards, provided however, it's talking about yards, residential yards. You know.
Well, it, it says accessory structures may not be placed within required yards, provided however, that it shall be under 700 square feet.
Right, but we're talking about yards. This is not a yard.
It's a commercial yard. Yeah, it's a commercial site and, and I have a residential site and other people have agricultural sites and other people have industrial sites. Well, I'm, I'm not.
So how would you feel then? I mean, I guess it's come down to this. We can either vote on it or we maybe get a legal opinion. Now, if we got a legal opinion.
They're gonna tell us it's allowed.
This isn't, and this isn't allowable.
Nobody's arguing that, Bruce.
Well, no, but I'm saying if we got a legal opinion, would you agree with the legal opinion?
Nobody's arguing that it's an allowed use. Some of the point is that this isn't a minor modification and it, and it is a change in the usage.
Well, I, I guess what I'm saying is, is if we got a, a, a legal opinion that, whether this be a minor modification or not.
The, the legal opinion that's gonna say we can do it if we feel it's in the best interests of Carver? I mean, that's what it's gonna say. I'll tell you right now that we're allowed to do it because the court system gives the planning board a vast amount of leeway in what they can define as in the best interests of the town. I, I think.
How does, how does anybody else feel? Do you, do you feel if we got a legal opinion with that, that this was a, was, was not a minor modification? I mean, I don't want these things to drag on forever. I suppose if we have to, if we have to, if we have to.
My, my, my biggest point is you're taking, you know, basically six businesses and turning it into two.
Yeah, but you can't go by, you can't go by your feelings. You have to go by the laws.
And it wasn't even there for a year and you already.
Well, okay, but anyway, would you, would, would you be swayed one way or another if, if this was, if, if they, if, if town council gave its views on whether this was a minor mod or not?
Yeah, I, I would probably take that into consideration.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
Kevin, do you?
I already shared what, how I feel. I'm, I'm fine with the, the fact that this is growth and that's what has to be. I, I would prefer not to be voting that this is a minor modification though. I, so I, I would want the, I would want, uh, for it to be, for legal counsel to say that I'm not voting minor modification. We're voting on what it, what it is.
So you, so you're looking, looking for a determination whether this is a minor modification or not?
Right.
All right.
Through usage and structural changes, not just, cause it's more than just walls up or walls down, which I would've expected would've been up. When did Agway open? A year ago?
I don't understand why the walls are now. That, that's my thing.
Well, well, no one occupies the building yet, so.
It's still under construction, yeah.
I, I mean, you know, would, I mean, I'm not asking you to take a straw vote.
Understanding that the walls were coming down.
Right. I mean, if we put the walls up, would, would that change anyone's opinion of the, of the matter? I mean, you know, we're, we're willing to give you what it needs to make you, if, if everyone thinks that this is a good use, you know, let us help you give the ammunition to make yourself comfortable with a vote. And if that's keeping the walls up, for instance, then, you know, we're happy to do it. If it's not storing liquid materials in the rear, we're happy to do it. But again, if it's, if it's irrelevant, it's irrelevant, but if that would be helpful, we're happy to do it.
What would be different at this table with the major?
Yeah, I mean, you know, and again, I think that Chairman Mackey made a good point is, you know, we're, we're kind of, I, I think that we're getting hung up on process. I mean, if we went back through this process, it's more work for everyone. You know, I would think to come out with the same result. I mean, we've got allowed uses. I mean, maybe this board wouldn't approve the project, but I, I'd be surprised by that. Um, you know, so, so what are we really doing here?
I think the board probably might've approved it under different conditions and a, a variety other of, of, of this, different circumstances.
So give us your conditions. I mean, we're, we're here to, you know, I mean, town council can't make all the decisions. I mean, they can tell you, I think what they're gonna tell you is it's up to you guys whether this is minor or not, you know.
Connie, what if, um, what if there was a condition that if Agway were not to be successful, that it would be required to put those, the walls back in place?
Well, I, I think that we, I honestly think that we should reclassify the building as accessory use to retail. And then in the future, and I don't see Agway ever having.
I wanna see them succeed.
Yeah, I wanna see them. See, I have no doubt that they're going to. They're, they're very good business and, uh, every time I've dealt with them was on a professional level, but, uh, in the future, should something untoward happen in that sense, then they can always come back and ask for a modification in the usage structure of the building.
And we're okay with that, just to be clear. We're, we're okay with.
No, no, like I said, I, I'm, I'm ignorant to the fact that the walls weren't up.
Yeah, right.
Uh, I thought the minor modification was the fact that you were taking them down. So I was unaware that they weren't up. I mean, I obviously wanna see Agway, um, Nutrien do well and I wanna see them grow and, but I, I do want, you know, for that usage down the road, if they aren't to do, be successful for it to be, you know, what it was supposed to be in the first place.
So, so, you know, the applicant is willing to agree that this modification reclassifies the use as retail, provided however, that if they're, if Nutrien shall vacate the property, it, it will be, you know, considered to be Craftsman Tradesmen. If that's what you're asking, that's okay with us.
I can't speak for Mr. Shea.
I would think you'd have to come back and request a modification for that.
Then we're okay with that too.
All right. So before we vote, let's, uh, I, I guess we've said all that we're gonna say. So before we vote, let's go over the, uh, the conditions.
Do you want me to read them, Mr. Jeff?
No, let me, cause I'm gonna have to mark, I'm gonna have to mark them up here. Let me just read the whole thing. So he had his meeting on November 9th, 2021. Oh, oh, the findings, okay. The applicant received planning board approval of site plan review and special permit to construct two commercial buildings in a lot in the general business district on June 9th, 2020. The front building was approved for housing a retail business with storage related to the retail business and the rear building was approved for use as a Craftsman Tradesman building containing five units to be rented. Businesses that met the definition of Craftsman Tradesman use. The applicant submitted, submitted the application for minor modification July 19th, 2021, requesting that four of the five units be combined to be used for storage for the tenant in the front building on the site. On October 5th, 2021, the applicant submitted a revised minor modification application requesting that the Craftsman Tradesman use be maintained for the four units being combined for the storage space so that if the space was not being leased to the front building tenant, then it could be leased for Craftsman Tradesman use. The applicant engaged how engineering fire protection engineers at the request of the Carver Fire Department to review the proposed contents that would be stored in the proposed leased space, provided a letter dated October 5th, 2021. Carver Fire Department was provided comment letters on the minor modification dated August 12th, 2021 and October 19th, 2021. The August 12th letter requested that the modification request have the same conditions as the original approval, that a fire protection engineer be hired as consultant to the deputy fire chief to review for applicable code compliance and related fire safety considerations, that a fire detection notification system including manual pool stations, horn strobe, warning devices, smoke and heat detectors, et cetera. And that access to three sides of the building is provided, that each structure be conspicuously numbered, identified in the tenant's emergency preparedness document be updated to reflect the additional space. On October 19th, the letter summarized discussions between the fire department chief, deputy fi- fire department chief, the applicant, the building commissioner and a neighbor, the deputy fire chief and the building department both agree that a fire alarm system is. Oh, well, I guess this has been changed. Fire system is required for the rear building, but the fire system shall be designed and installed to the same standard as the front building. But that has now changed, so we're gonna have to strike that out of, out of this. Out of this, the, the fire stuff. But, uh, oh, the Carver Building Commissioner Paul Bucha provided an email dated October 14th, 2021 that the request to convert the four units to storage would come under section 2240, the zoning by law accessory buildings and uses that the combined four units will be used as an accessory use to the front building. The board voted to approve the minor modification to the special permit with the following conditions. Prior to the, so here's the conditions. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, a true copy of the recorded decision as registered at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds shall be submitted to the planning board. An applicant to, the applicant shall follow all of the conditions of June 9th, 2020, planning board decision, approving the site plan review and special permit. The applicant shall conform to the conditions of the August 12th and August 19th, 2021 Carver Fire Department letters. I don't, was this changed? Okay, the applicant shall, okay, so. Yeah, we're gonna have to change this cause then we just got a new letter. Did, did you get this?
Yeah, I think, I think you don't need to reference any letter because the new letter doesn't have any conditions in it. The, the current letter backtracks from the others and doesn't provide.
Right, right, right.
So I, if I were drafting it, I wouldn't even reference that as a condition.
Right. So we don't have to do fire alarms, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that. I don't know. You know, we may have to go over this and maybe we'll just, uh, and sign it at our next meeting. So let's just see what the planning board members might wanna add to this. And, uh, so we're gonna take out the part about the fire detection notification system, which was under 3A. Um, 3B is fine. The applicant shall ensure that access to three sides of the building is provided. 3C, the applicant shall make sure that each structure be conspicuously numbered slash identified. And D, the applicant's tenant shall update the tenant's emergency preparedness document to reflect the additional space being leased. And then we can eliminate four.
Should we, if there's a fire?
What's that? Eliminate four?
I, I don't know that we should and if there's a fire and it has to be hosed down, where's, where's all that gonna go?
Well, again, it's not required by law. They did do it in the front building. We do have, uh, so we were just gonna store the dry materials in this back building. And then the, the, uh, liquid materials would be stored in the front building. We do have, there is a containment catch basin at the, in the parking lot that we have. Do you, do you have any, remember about that, the specifications of that?
Yeah, so with the drainage system on site, we took special precautions that the drainage system can contain any runoff and then it has a gate valve to close it if there was ever an emergency so that none of the water that was contained with it would bleach into the ground. So we added a gate valve system that would, that would contain that within the system.
And that was at the catch basin?
Yeah, which everything on the site drains into.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So I don't know if, if you, how you feel about that? If they store the dry in the rear and, and then they still have that special catch, catch basin in, in, in the rear of the parking lot?
You're talking about fertilizers and insecticides and whatnot and.
Which by law, is, is, it's not required to, to do that, yeah.
But I understand that, but, uh, in the event of a, in, in the event of a fire or anything else like that and you're, you're soaking everything, you're essentially making it a liquid and it's gonna start leaching everything into the ground. And, uh, that's right into the, uh, right into the local aquifer underneath. That's, if there's no, um, if, if the catch basin isn't extended out that way. catch basin isn't extended out that way, then what's to prevent all that stuff in the event of a fire or whatnot from leaching into the aquifer and affecting the water supply?
So would you be willing to put an entrapment system in the back four bays?
So a containment similar to...
Yeah, containment, yeah. Similar to what you have in the front. How was the front one? Is that, is that a concrete berm that surrounds the uh?
Yeah, it's a steel perimeter that's welded.
Oh, it's just a steel perimeter?
Yeah, and it has some gates at the doors.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we could certainly consider it if it, if it alleviated everybody's concerns here.
Turn into steel, why they don't have a sprinkler system in the, in the back buildings?
Sprinkler system is not required, because the building has to be a certain square footage. So uh, you know, like, you know, the, the floor space. Has to be a certain square footage, by law. If it's not, if it's under that, and I forget what it is, I don't know, you know? Huh?
Seventy-two hundred square feet.
Seventy-two hundred square feet. So this building is less than seventy-two hundred square feet?
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five, okay. Okay, and this building is seventy-two hundred. Okay. So they don't have to have a sprinkler system. I mean, we've run into this in, in town before, and, and it's the law, and so after a certain size, you don't have to have a sprinkler system, but it's the law. If it's under that, you don't, it's not required. If it's over that size, then you have to have it, so. Okay, so, so if, if that, I mean, I, that's fine with me, it's so due, so in this particular condition, it says due to certain, due to concerns about potential contamination to the sole, sole source aquifer from a release of hazardous materials, the applicant shall install a product containment runoff protection system similar to the one constructed for the front building, which is occupied by Nutrien, and as stated in condition seven of the special permit and site plan review dated June 9th, 2020 on this site. So that would take care of the, the containment system for this back building. So I don't know if you want to specify for the four, four bays that, that's gonna be used?
Well, I, I guess I was gonna say, you know, that there's substantial expense associated with the containment system, so we'd ask the board to consider if that is gonna be a condition, that there not be a restriction on the type of material in the rear building, cause then we're on par with the front building. You know, if we're storing, if we have the same spill containment system, I think it would be logical to allow us to store the same materials, so we'd like to have one or the other. Again, dry only with no containment is preferable from a cost standpoint. If that's not acceptable and you need the containment, uh, you know, we'd like not to have that restriction on what's stored there.
But does the front building have a sprinkler system?
Yes, sir.
And that's probably...
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it does not, no.
Does it have a fire alarm?
It does, because of public access.
Yes, it, it does, cause the, yeah, retail nature.
Okay, so number five, the applicant and each of the future tenants of the Craftsman Tradesman
I think that could be removed, that could be removed.
So, okay, well, let me just read it, and we can, we can talk about it. The applicant and each of the future tenants, well, it would, of the Craftsman Tradesman space must conform to section 2230, use regulation. Schedule of the Cava zoning bylaws and meet the definition of Craftsman Tradesman, as well as other provisions of the zoning and general bylaws and requirements of the Cava Fire Department. So, but there is gonna be one Craftsman Tradesman space there. So I think we probably should still have this here, then. The proposed storage use is an accessory use to the retail use and retail tenant on the property. If the lease with the retail tenant is discontinued, or the storage use is discontinued and the rear building is discontinued, then the use of the rear building shall revert back to Craftsman Tradesman's use.
I think that was the sentence.
Is that what you were, we were talking about?
That was the sentence, I was leaning, like, the first sentence is fine, but the second sentence is probably what I was more alluding to.
Right, right. So that, that satisfies, yeah, okay. So seven was prior issuance of the certificate of use and occupancy. A, any outstanding balance of the review and inspections deposit account shall be paid. B, as built plans, shall be submitted to the town's engineer and permitting department in both electronic and hard copy form prior to the final inspection. And C, in accordance with section 3180, compliance of the Cava zoning bylaws, the town's engineer shall inspect the project to ensure that it has been completed in compliance with the approved site plan and its conditions.
I think one of the other conditions was the dry goods in the rear only?
Well, I think they discussed that if they're gonna put the containment system in, so they could do both?
Yep.
Well, that, that was, that was the question, was if we're gonna, if we're gonna require the containment system, and they want to be able to make, make sure that they can store both, liquids and dry in the back?
Yeah.
Without it, they would just use the dry.
Just dry, yeah. Okay. So so, I, I don't, so we, we do have some changes in here. I mean, there was changes to the, the uh, the deputy fire chief letter. Well, no, he still did say that fire alarm, well, it's not, and the building both agree that a fire alarm system is required.
That, that's the most, actually happened to be on the screen. That's the one from today.
Yeah, so it'll be uh, November 9th. Okay, so so we have to change that paragraph to reflect the latest fire department approval of no alarm system required dated November 9th, 2021. Okay. And um, so is, okay, so is everybody on board of that? So so the conditions, is everybody? So we're gonna have, one will be the same, condition one. Condition two will be the same. Condition three will be the same.
Except for A.
Will conform to conditions. In October, and, oh, and uh, and November 9th, I guess we'll have to put in here, too.
I think that the sentence...
So we're gonna strike 3A?
And, and I would think the whole number three, not, not B, C, and D, but the number three? Because the, I don't believe the fire department put any conditions.
So we're gonna strike A, but we'll, we'll keep B, C, and D. We'll keep four. Condition four about the uh, containment runoff protection system. We'll keep five.
Except for the, the word, it says Craftsman Tradesman spaces.
Yeah, just space.
Yeah.
The proposed, and we'll keep six.
Just the first sentence?
So you, I, proposed storage use is an accessory use to the retail use and retail. So, I mean, that whole paragraph is, is, is okay, right, no?
Just the first sentence, right?
What the proposed storage use is an accessory use to the retail use and retail tenant on the property.
Right, well, we're identifying it as an accessory structure rather than...
Accessory, yeah. And then it says, if the lease with the retail tenant is discontinued, or the storage use is discontinued in the rear building, or the storage use in the, is, it's discontinued in the rear building is, is discontinued. I think that's, I think it's...
Where it says revert back to Craftsman Tradesman's use.
Yeah, then the use of the, sure revert back to the Craftsman Tradesman's use. You don't want that.
No, because we're changing it to an accessory structure, not a Craftsman Tradesman building.
Oh, okay, so you're saying that you don't want it automatically going back to Craftsman Tradesman?
Petition.
Okay.
The board again in the future, but I just wanna make sure that...
Is that all right? Yeah, I think you've already agreed with that.
It makes sure we identify the property as, the building as, well, the four bays as accessory use, area, an accessory structure.
All right. All right. So do you wanna vote on this now with those changes?
I, I would like to see what the building inspector says in regards to to this. Just the changes we made, changing part of a building to accessory use.
Well, that, he was saying that that, that was okay.
Right, but I wanna make sure it conforms with the size requirements, cause otherwise, we have to give a variance on that, and that hasn't been requested.
I don't, he, he already looked at this and said that they could do the four bays as a an accessory, accessory use.
Even though it exceeds the, I mean, the 700 square foot requirement in the bylaws?
I, I mean, I think Jim Walsh put it to the building inspector in an email, is the proposed change use allowable, and he said it would come...
The proposed change use is allowable, yes, but does it meet the, the requirements of the bylaws? Is, all I just wanna get that answer from the building inspector.
So
yeah, I mean, if he says it's allowable, I'm not sure what else you'd look for.
The use is allowable, but is, if, if the walls are up, maybe they could be four accessory uses to the, but you're asking for one, and the floor area is gonna exceed, exceed 700 square feet, and I wanna make sure that's allowable without a variance.
With the building code, I, I don't understand that.
Section 2245C requires that any accessory buildings shall not exceed a floor area of 700 square feet?
Yeah, that's garages, tool sheds, and the like. I mean, this is clearly residential.
It says garages, tool shed, shops, wells, houses, and the like.
Right, you know, you are.
I just want clarification from the building inspector.
Yeah, I mean, respectfully, this is our third planning board hearing for a minor modification. You know, I, I think the applicant's entitled to closure at some point.
Well, you know, it, maybe if this had been all done from the beginning, it wouldn't be an issue, but you're coming back asking for a modification to a building that is clearly...
We've been asking for it since October 12th, was our third hearing, so, you know, we haven't changed our proposal, or our site plans, or, or our application since that first year.
I'll leave it up to the chairman to decide where to go with this. Maybe it's something you missed, maybe it's something he missed, maybe it's something we all missed. But because we're asking for a change in the use structure, I just wanna make sure that, because accessory structures may not be placed within required yards, provided however that.
Um, I don't know. I, I, he, he's looked at that, and he said that, that this was fine as an accessory use. That's all I could say. And he, he went through the bylaws. So if we have a, I, I don't know. I mean, again, you know, we're, we're doing something, and if they ask for a waiver, it'll be done, but it would, it'll just take longer, and, I don't know. I mean, I think that, that we've, we've got something out of this anyway. I know that the, the board wanted to see the, the Craftsman Tradesman there, but we did get, I think, floor containment not required, but to get that by the board is, is a good thing, and I know it would, it, it certainly makes the neighbors feel better, I would think, to have that, that floor containment area. Like I said, I already spoke to the building department about this, and they, they said from their perspective, it was fine. So I, I don't know. I would like to make a decision. I would like to make a decision on this tonight.
So um, are we gonna assume when it says shall revert back to Craftsman Tradesman's use, that that, that would be if in the event that Nutrien Ag is no longer gonna be there, that, then the, the walls would be built? Is that what that statement is making?
Well...
Which, which, I'm sorry, which statement?
Number six. Just wanna make sure, when, when they're using the word revert back to...
I think we struck that when we did the conditions. We struck, we kept the first sentence.
We kept the first sentence?
Yeah, but struck the second sentence.
So if they, if they decide to ban, abandon the storage use to an accessory building, they'd have to come back and then talk to the building inspector. See, now, you know, I've had talks with the building inspector about, and, and he's, you know, he's trying to carefully mon- monitor what's going into these buildings, so it's an allowable use. Because, you know, there were questions, and, and now we have a full-time building inspector, so, and when somebody comes and occupies one of these areas, I think they have to, they come in for, you know, a building permit, so that they explain what they're doing there.
So they'd be coming back?
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, I believe so, yep.
All right.
All right. So would you, would the board be willing to vote on this tonight with those changes that we just made to the conditions?
I would be.
And then I'll, yeah, then we'll, and then I'll have him redo the, the conditions over, and um, and then we can, then we'll have to sign it at a later date if, if approved as a minor mod. Does that work? Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minor modification at 96 Forest Street. To approve the five bay building, four bays to as a secondary use to the first building in front, with one bay in the back as a Craftsman Tradesman. And with the conditions as noted, and, and as, as we change them.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion by Kevin Robinson, this is for the record, and, and a second by Ellen Sidillo. So this is uh, okay, so this is just a regular, a vote, not a super majority. This is just a majority vote on this. So um, so those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Oh, oh, uh, okay. Let's do this again. Were you gonna, you can vote on this, because we never did a site walk on this.
Okay.
But um, so, um, those up, it was the next ones that we're looking at, yeah.
All right, all right.
Okay, so... Okay, so, could we just do that again, just for clarification? So, uh, maybe we could do a roll call vote because this is going to be done by video on, on notes, so, uh, Mr. Shea?
Cornelia Shea says no.
John Gasky says yes.
Bruce Mackey, aye?
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
All right, so for a, uh, so we had a four to one vote, uh, to approve the minor modification. Okay.
Thank you for your consideration and your time, Gus.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So, so, uh, let's see, Kevin made the motion. And then Ellen. All right. Now, we could sign this tonight, or do you want to see this all put together?
I'd rather see it all put together.
All right, we can do that. Then, okay, so it, it's, we'll probably, uh, uh, put this together and then, uh, and sign it at our next meeting. Attorney?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, was that?
Your prerogative, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm happy to look at it if we'd like to do it.
Okay. So... Okay, so the next thing we have is, uh, public hearing continued. This is the first one, the application of JCM Carver Acquisitions LLC requesting a special permit for fast food or drive-in restaurant and site plan review pursuant to sections twenty-two hundred, use regulations twenty-three hundred, dimensional requirements twenty-three thirty, multiple principal structures thirty-one hundred, site plan review forty-three hundred, water resource protection fifty-three hundred, special permit, and other pertinent sections of the Carver zoning bylaw located at two-eight-seven Tremont Street, assesses map ninety-four lot five dash zero dash R to demolish an existing five-twenty-five square foot building and construct a new fifty-foot by twenty-five-foot ice cream shop building and a ninety-foot by fifty-foot storage garage landscaping and parking. Property is located in the general business district. Just do, uh, do, do we have anybody here for that?
I thought that was...
Okay. Uh, okay. So, uh, yeah, I thought somebody would be here with, uh, plans and stuff tonight to, uh, talk about this.
With your brothers. Myself and my brother, Western Brothers Cranberries, we own all the way around.
Uh, well, nobody's here to, uh, present it. So, let's go on.
This isn't an open hearing yet, is it? I think it's...
No, this, okay, I'll just give a background of this thing for a second. I, you know, the night's dragging on and we, we still got a, a full schedule here. What happened with, uh, this is, is that, uh... We're, I don't know, this is the first time that this has happened, but, uh, this was, Erickson's Ice Cream Shop, and we've had, uh, we opened this up a few meetings back. We opened up the, uh, the special, uh, hearing and, um, maybe, I, I don't know, I'm, you know, I'm sorry about this, uh, I don't, I, I just met with the engineer and the building inspector, uh, this week, and, um, I thought he was coming tonight. Maybe my, I misunderstood, but, uh, but anyway, uh, we had seen something proposed before, so, um, I'm not going to explain this because since nobody's here and since we don't have any plans or anything. So, uh, well, I'm saying there's, there's no one here to, to present the project. I'm sorry about that, but, um, unfortunately, we don't, we don't have a, a full-time planner and we don't have full-time people in the office to, to do any of this stuff. So, anyway...
My question was, did we open a public hearing on this?
We did open the public hearing, a couple, so...
Well, if we have the gentleman here, I...
Yeah, so I, I, I would say that we just continue this meeting, and I wasn't going to have, uh, February, uh, a, uh, a meeting just before Thanksgiving. I was going to, uh, schedule our next meeting on December fourteenth. So I'd like to continue the public hearing on the application of JCM Carver Acquisitions, uh, at two-eight-seven Tremont Street, and I'd like to continue this meeting to, uh, December fourteenth. Bruce?
Hope.
Yep. We, we are in a public meeting, right? A public hearing, though? I'm, I'm just, are we right now in a public hearing for this?
Can I make some comment?
Uh, sure. Did you sign the sign-in sheet? And just give us your name and address, please, and you can come up to the microphone. I mean, we, you know, none of these board members have seen the plan. I didn't even know what the, the project has changed, uh, since we saw it. We got a little piece of paper and, and I don't think it was even heard the night that we, we went through this, so, uh...
No, it's just, it's been continued since it was...
Yeah, it was supposed to be, have it continued. I know, uh, they were looking, and maybe I misunderstood, um, they're still looking for information from the DEP about, uh, water usage, water usage out there, and they still may have been, uh, waiting for, uh, that information to come back. So I guess maybe that's why they didn't come here tonight to present until they had that information, because that would determine whether they could go forward with this project or not. All right, go ahead, you can, if you want to speak, you know...
Well, we...
If you give us your name and address, please.
Okay, James E. Weston, nine Lakeview Street, South Carver. And we're the owners, myself and my brother, we own Western Brothers Cranberries, and we own completely around them except for fifty-eight. And, uh, we had a lot of concerns because they're trying to, looks to me like they're trying to stuff a ton of things on a little bit of property, and, uh, I was kinda inquisitive about the way you wanted to know what went into that building. They, they think they're gonna put three bays with three sets of bathrooms with a forty-five-hundred foot, foot square filled building that's not even there now, with that runoff. Then I was told that they're gonna blacktop the parking lot, which is now dirt, and with that runoff, and then they're gonna double the size of the ice cream shop and have a bathroom in there. So we went to the DEP, we talked to Mr. McLaughlin, and we, we found out their water usage right now is permitted for a thousand gallons of water a day. And the reason we went looking for that is because our cranberry bogs right behind Erickson's Ice Cream, and their well, their circle goes right to the edge of our bog. Not in it, but on the edge of it. And we also talked to him that if they decide they want to put a drive-through, that's automatically ups it to thirty-five-hundred gallons of water a day, whether they use it or not.
Well, let me tell you what I've learned. I don't want to, I don't want to interrupt you. We have a bunch of other things we've got to get to, and this will have a, this will be a full hearing. We don't have plans before us to even look, and, yeah, I, I guess you've looked at the plans. None of these board members have even seen it.
Well, I saw what they brought the last time.
Yeah.
And, uh, we looked at it.
Well, let me tell you, let me tell you what, what I've heard, this, because this doesn't, this involves the planning board. It also involves the board of health and...
And the conservation.
And, and conservation. So it, it involves three boards. And, um, so, you know, the planning board will look at it from a building standpoint, whether they can put the two buildings on the lot, which they can, you know, by, by our, by our laws. I've already went through this with the building inspector, and, uh, they, they can, they can do this. The first plan came with, uh, a new ice cream shop, and then they were, they're gonna have a storage building out back, but since then it's gonna be a Craftsman Tradesman in the back, I believe. But I, I don't want to speak, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be two buildings, one and then a Craftsman Tradesman. But like I say, I don't have the plans, this is just from memory, and, um, and then, so that's what the planning board's looking at. Of course, conservation's looking at it from conservation standpoint of wetlands, cranberry bogs and stuff like that, um, and septic. Uh, the third is the, uh, the, uh, board of health is looking at it because this is considered a public water supply, from what I understand, because it's used by over twenty-five people in, in, in a day. Because of the people coming in and out and the workers in the building doing the ice cream and stuff like that. So, um, so they're looking at it and they're, they're coming up with, uh, figures on how much water, uh, will be used on the site. And it's, you know, they're got, they're going to, uh...
Has any, uh, figure been given?
Not yet. They haven't come up with a figure yet. I mean, this was from discussions that I had, which really wasn't a part of what the planning board's doing, but, but I, they're wait, they're working with the state on this. So, um, that's, that's DEP, yeah. So that's the third component of it, you know?
Oh, that's, that's a big one.
Yeah, right, right.
Because that affects our cranberry bogs and...
Right, but that has nothing to do with the planning board. But I, but I understand, when you put all those pieces together, it, it does, but, but it doesn't, but...
I, I assume that the, uh, parking lot runoff and all the other runoff where it's gonna go into those two kidney-shaped retention ponds.
Yeah, we'll ta- we'll take a look at that, but again, we don't have the plans before us and we don't have the calculations. And when we do have this meeting, um, we'll have, uh, Fasen O'Neil here, um, someone to represent the town, and, and, you know, they'll look at the drainage, they'll review all this. Of course, the conservation will have to do this too, they'll review all that, and then the state is gonna review all this too. But I can't give you any more information other than that.
Okay.
No, that's, that, that's all.
Well, I know it's been kind of fluctuating for months and, uh...
Yeah, it has, and it really hasn't come before us because I think what was decided was why go before conservation and the planning board? Well, maybe it's already gone to conservation, but why go before them?
It did, and we were there. And they had all kinds of questions, but they wanted to hear from you people first.
Yeah, well, with, we got, they decided they'd go to the state and see what the water usage is gonna be, because that determines whether they can do this or not.
Well, that's...
So that...
You're looking at the guy that brought that up.
Yeah, right. So they, so they're gonna, that's what they're gonna look at first, and then if, if, if that works, um, and they can fit all the, the qualifications that they have, you know, meet all the qualifications that they have to meet with the water usage and, and everything, then they'll come to conservation or, or they'll come to the planning board next, yeah. And that's all I know, that's all I know. And I'm sorry that, uh, I thought it was tonight.
It is. It's written right on the paper.
Yeah, well, I mean, sometimes that, that can happen, you know?
Well, if they don't show up, uh, so...
Yeah.
The, the next scheduled meeting for this case will be...
I'm not sure. I mean, you gotta look at, I, you know, I was, I was talking to Jim and he was saying that they, we had talked to them and they had given us the time because we were worried about the time limit we have for this, because it, we have to hear it when it's first, when, whenever it comes into town hall, we have a certain amount of time to hear it. And they agreed to extend this to, I believe, the end of December. So it'll either be, uh, it'll either be...
Because I know the November ninth date's been out there, I believe, since September.
Yeah, um, it'll either be this, see, we're not gonna, we're not gonna meet November twenty-third, uh, but our next meeting will be December fourteenth, and then the following one will be December twenty-eighth. So it'll either be one of those two, the fourteenth or twenty-eighth of December, I believe.
We, we have to have completed it by December thirty-first regardless.
Right, right, right. So, yeah, I mean, that doesn't give us much time, so, I mean, I was hoping that...
You, you have to, excuse me, what, what do you have to do before the thirty-first?
We have to decide one way or the other, and like if, if today was the twenty-eighth, we have...
Yeah, I talked to Jim about this and he said, uh, you should talk to them and get a letter, and if it goes beyond December, the end of December, then, and then I should, uh, see if I can get a letter from them to extend it and to, you know, pass that...
I would think you'd have to, because you can't very well make a decision if the client doesn't show up.
Yeah, and, you know, it's, it's been a hectic week and, uh, and, and it, I don't know, it, something didn't get, uh, didn't get translated.
Yeah, well, yeah.
You know, because, but, but like I say, we don't have a full-time planner here, we don't have a full-time secretary, plans pile up on the counter out, outside in the hallway. I come in, I try to do the best I can. It wasn't, uh, I've already retired, this is not my full-time job, and the, and the pay isn't that great.
Well, the reason I'm kind of curious about this, because we've been dealing with this on-off thing for a while.
Yeah, no, I understand.
You kind of get suspicious that, uh...
I understand.
Well, we want to be able to ram it through right at the end because you have to make a decision by the thirty-first.
No, no, nobody's, nobody's gonna ram anything through.
And, uh, well, my next question was, now, are they gonna meet with conservation before then?
I have no idea what the sequence is.
Because I know conservation wanted them to meet with you first.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, you said you already went to a conservation...
Yeah, and they, they had a lot of questions about that building, they want to know what was going, like you were with this other guy.
They will wait your information about the water usage, then, I guess, too.
Well, not so much the water usage, was the guy wanted to know what's going in there.
Yeah.
And he didn't know.
All right, well, I, I, I can't tell you that.
And my big concern was the runoff going out of those, because on those two water holes they made for the drainage.
Sure, yeah, they have...
On the backside, they had little flumes to let it run on our property.
Yeah, well, well, we'll take a look at, it's not supposed to do that.
No, and, uh...
It's not supposed to do that. It's supposed to stay on property.
Well, I told them, I says, I have a canal in the back and I can't open it up and let it run across your property, so you can't run it across mine.
Right, no, but that'll all look, be looked at by the town's engineers. We haven't even got to that point yet.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, I'm sorry for the mix-up.
No, it's, well, like I say, this date's been picked for almost a month and a half to two months, and I'm surprised that things didn't work out.
Right. All right.
Okay, well, I thank you very much for your time.
Okay.
It's all, you said between the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
Well, we have two meetings coming up. Just watch it on the schedule.
Yeah, okay.
You know, it's posted on the, on the town site, you know, planning board, Carver, Mass, and, and they, they'll have the meetings and they'll post the, you know, what we're supposed to hear. But the, the next meeting will be December fourteenth, and then the next one will be December twenty-eighth.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You mean the fourteenth of December?
December, yes, yes. So I don't know, uh, I guess we can continue this to, uh, December fourteenth, and then if I hear anything different, we'll have to change that. I mean, that's all I can do.
Cornelia Shea makes the motion to extend the, uh, JCM hearing till December fourteenth.
I'll second it.
Okay, so, uh, so, Shea, and then, uh, and then, who did I hear first? Mr. Robinson, okay. Okay, Cornelia Shea made the motion, Kevin second, and, uh, so, uh, that was to continue the hearing to December fourteenth at seven o'clock. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that is unanimous. All right. Everything's going smooth so far. All right, so next is the application of Bayberry Dunes LLC requesting a special permit pursuant to sections twenty-three thirty and fifty-three hundred of the Carver zoning bylaw. It's located at two Lillian Way in Carver, Mass, assesses map forty-nine lot sixty-two dash two, could construct two commercial buildings, one six thousand square feet and one seven thousand two hundred square feet for a total of thirteen thousand two hundred square feet on one lot. The proposed buildings will, uh, use will be Craftsman Tradesman and the general business district. So, you know, we, we talked about this at our last meeting. I do... I do have a... conditions here. Oh, before we do that, I guess. So this is, this is a public hearing, so first thing we have to do is, well, well, I guess I'll talk about it. So the, I guess what we've, the improvements to the buildings were to be four cupolas, two on each building, gonna put five windows in the rear of the building that faces Main Street with shutters on the windows. And we're gonna do lattice work on the, and the size is in the decision. We're gonna put three pieces of lattice work on the sides of the building that are facing Lillian Way. And we were gonna plant four abovites, two at each corner of those buildings that face Lillian Way. So I do have a decision with that written. As I said at the last meeting, we spent a long time when we originally saw the, when we did the special permit for the site, we didn't do the special, the special permit for the building was not included for the second building. It's all allowable. On the first application for the special permit for the cited, site approval, we spent a long time doing the landscaping out there as, and we showed the landscaping plans. And I would say that we have more landscaping on this particular project than I've seen on two or three projects combined in town. So, you know, we just haven't had, you know, we have a lot of landscaping there. So it is a, it is a public hearing. I mean, if there's anything that the board members wanna say, if you wanna open up...
Yeah, thank you Chairman Mackey for the record, Rob D'Ambroso, D'Ambroso Lawn Plymouth. I had an opportunity to review the draft decision and I think we were, you know, pleased with it, it reflected the dialogue to date. I did just have a suggestion, I think Jim Walsh may have forwarded to the board, but, you know, Condition 3B says five windows for each unit.
Yeah, I kinda changed that and I'll read it if we get to that point, hopefully.
Yeah, makes it sound like 25 windows.
I kinda did it so that I think it's more understandable.
Okay, all right, yeah. So I mean, again, I would just strike for each of the Craftsman-Tradesman units and I would just say, you know.
Yeah, I did, I did read your letter, so I'll...
All right, very good.
I'll read through that and we'll hash through that once we get to that point.
So, yeah, that's it. I mean, this is our third hearing as well, I think, so we don't have anything to add as an opening remark. We'll be glad to take any feedback from the board.
All right. This is a public, so if there's anything that the board members wanna say, or you just want me to let the public speak and then the board members can speak after that? How does you feel? All right. Seeing, okay, I see there's some neighbors nearby, I don't know if they wanna speak about this.
So is it possible to look at what you brought in?
Yeah, of course, take it.
Hi, Judy Richards, by Lillian Way. The big issue I have here that a lot of things were missed. And I know we spent a lot of time a year or two ago in regards to the landscaping, a lot of things fell through the hole. So trying to move forward, we're looking at the changes that they're doing here. There's unfortunately not much more you can do other than try to cover up what's there. In my opinion, that we have to move forward, we want them to get their buildings done and we want everything to be completed. My question will be, is the landscape gonna be finished before they get a permit to move in? Because I feel that a lot of this won't be finished by the time that they're gonna be putting their tradesmen buildings or allowing the renters to be there. There in there, is the building's gonna be complete? Like, when does it get signed off?
All right, let's ask the, I mean, I don't have the building inspector here and I don't have anybody else here to ask that question, but I could ask the people who own the property if, you know, if they're gonna have the landscaping in this year or not and when, would you think that you would have people moving in? I mean, do you have people that are anticipating moving in there immediately?
We, right now, we're trying to get these buildings done in the next month or so, they're gonna be paving next week. One of the major hurdles we're having right now is have EverSource bring power to the buildings. I had the well company place the pump and the expansion tank the other day. We're getting to the point where it's, doesn't make sense to landscape. I don't wanna plant stuff now and lose it. And I don't even know if I'll have electricity in the next four weeks, to tell you the truth. I've been going back and forth with EverSource to get that. So without electricity, I can't, I won't even have water in the building. So I don't know when we're gonna be actually coming in for an occupancy permit. But if foreseeable, if electricity comes in in four weeks, which I'm hoping it does, we're in December, I don't foresee us planting anything, you know, in December and January and February, you know, until the spring. I don't wanna, nothing will take. So at that point, we were gonna try to come in and talk to the building commissioner and see if we could work something out where we could get an occupancy. And I don't know if there'd be conditions, conditions to occupy the building and put the landscaping in the spring, so we could at least try to lease these and get some revenue out of them.
Well, it's not like you're gonna lease the whole thing all at once. So even if you did lease one or two...
We might not lease any, yeah.
And if you put the landscaping in the spring, if that's the way it turned out to be...
Yeah.
Then, yeah, we could talk to the building spectrum.
Yeah, I would've loved to have this all in already, it's just...
Right.
The stars haven't aligned for us, this project's really been dragging on. And I've been pressuring them. I mean, we've been in talks with EverSource since February.
But that has nothing to do with the planning board and these hearings?
No, nothing, no decisions are made here. It's just dealing with utilities. And like I said, no electricity, I'm not gonna have occupancy anyway, so. I mean, I'm hoping to have it in four weeks, but they've been straining us along, so. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Okay, so I'll have to talk to the building inspector, we'll have to condition it somehow that...
Could our condition be that?
Can we speak into the phone?
I'm just wondering if for Ms. Richards' sake of being concerned about you doing the landscaping, if maybe we could condition holding off you occupying the last bay until the landscaping was completed. I understand...
What do you mean the last bay? I don't understand what you're saying.
You're gonna have five, you're gonna potentially have five renters.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Eleven, yeah.
Eleven, so, so as a condition, possibly holding two of them for, one for each building, so that it would ensure that you could, obviously, I understand, being a landscaper myself, that now's not a good, going forward, you don't really wanna plant anything. But maybe for the, maybe for the sake of keeping the peace in the neighborhood, we could do something like that.
Yeah, I'd be fine with, you know, to, reassurance that we're gonna do it, I mean, I'm gonna do it.
Yeah, right.
That's the plan and I just, I can't justify spending that kind of money at this point.
I mean, I can't see you doing the work if you can't, can't get electricity anyways.
Yeah, I don't even know if I'll even have occupancy.
If you have electricity and you don't have water, then you wouldn't be able to water the plants either.
Correct. Yep.
So we could put a condition in saying something like before issuing a building permit on, on the last two units of the project, landscaping has to be completed?
Yeah, a CO on two, you can hold two back or whatever, that's fine. I'm fine with that, I intend to do it, so.
It was just a suggestion to keep the peace with the neighborhood?
I'm fine with it.
Are we there, they're assured that it's getting done?
Yep.
Regardless of the timing?
Yep.
You're up against the winter.
Yep. Just hasn't, nothing's worked right. Just really hasn't, I'm being honest, so.
All right, we haven't closed the public hearing, so, Will, this is Sinclair.
William Sinclair, five Lillian Way. Just a point of clarification, holding back two bays to allow what the building commissioner's job is supposed to be as the code enforcement officer, ensuring that the plans are done and for the planning board to making sure that every project gets done with what you approved and handcuffing this gentleman on a potential rent, I don't understand. You just claim that you meant, you're trying to be good to businesses and stuff, it doesn't make any sense to do that.
That's my suggestion, Will.
I agree, I just don't think...
We just, yeah, we just toss some things...
My suggestion, and Ms. Richards came up and had a concern that the landscaping wasn't gonna get done. So this would assure that the landscaping gets done and he didn't seem to have a problem with it.
I get it.
So we're trying to make both parties happy here in this situation.
I think we're more than happy. Well, at least I am.
Yeah, I mean, I've never run into a situation like this and since we...
The question I have, I can't be the first project ever in Carver that's come, you know, and you get to the point where you can't finish landscaping because of weather permitting, I don't know what normally happens. I mean, I know I can't be the first one ever in any town.
Yeah, I'd have to talk to the building commissioner on what they do.
But I'm willing to, I want it in good faith, I wanna get into the building. Realistically, I probably am not gonna rent out all of these over the winter. I mean, potentially, but I just feel like, you know, we're gonna do this, I wanna finish this to the end, so that's our plan.
No, I understand.
I just, unless there's another, you guys have seen in the past where, you know, we come into this time of the season and I just can't finish the landscaping.
Right, right.
I don't know, if you've done things in the past, I really don't know. So I just, I wouldn't think I'd be the first.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, do you, do you wanna write this into the conditions or not? I mean, I imagine if the building inspector was here, he could tell us, I mean, I don't do the building inspector's job, I mean, you know, we, so I don't know what they usually do for, for wintertime when, when things like this happen.
Yeah.
I mean, for what it's worth, I think it's in the applicant's interest to complete the landscaping to attract tenants.
Right, I would think so, too.
It doesn't, doesn't look great, I mean, you know.
Right, I would agree.
I think he's got all the motivation in the world to get the landscaping done.
Right.
Yeah, we've had people come and look and they just can't see, you know, it looks like a construction site. I mean, I'm trying to get this paving done, people just can't see a finished product.
Right.
I don't know what it is, so I wanna get this done as fast as I can, believe me.
No, I understand, yeah. Yeah, it'd be a benefit to you, yeah. All right.
I think he's bent over backwards, trying to please everybody.
Yeah.
He has.
All right, so we'll get to the conditions in a second, but if there, if there's nobody here in the public audience that wants to speak, if you have, then I'll, I'll close, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Cornelius Shea makes a motion to close the public hearing for Bayberry Dunes LLC special permit for two buildings at Lillian Way.
I'll second that.
So, Shea, and so, Mr. Shea made the motion and Ellen second. All right, those in favor to close the public hearing for Bayberry Dunes requesting a special permit for, to construct two commercial buildings on a lot, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Oh, Mr. Nagasky, were you still gonna, you were gonna, you were gonna abstain from voting and let Rich Deion vote? Okay, thank you. Okay, so that was unanimous. And then, all right, so let me go through the, let me go through the conditions. Let me just go through the conditions here. One, prior to the issuance of a building permit, a true copy of the recorded decision as registered at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds shall be submitted to the planning board. Two, the applicant shall conform to the conditions of the site plan review decision dated October 8th, 2019. And three, the applicant shall add the following architectural and landscaping elements to the buildings and landscaping on the site in order to be in compliance with, with Section 3167 of the zoning bylaws. All right, so this is what I, this is what I, how I kind of changed this, but 3A says two cupolas will be added to each building for a total of four cupolas. 3B, five windows, comma, with shutters on each side of the windows, comma, shall be added to each of the Craftsman-Tradesman units of the building that fronts on North Main Street, Route 58, for a total of five windows, one per unit, on side of the building facing North Main Street. Does that sound all right? I think that, that pretty much clarifies it.
Yeah, I mean, five totals the key. I mean, I wouldn't say for each unit, because I still think it's, but, you know.
Why, I said, for a total of five windows, one per unit, on side of building facing North Main Street.
Yeah, yep.
I, you know, I think that pretty much clarifies it. Okay, 3C, three sections of lattice work shall be added to the ends of each building that faces Lillian Way for a total of six lattice work sections. Each lattice work section shall be five feet by eight feet in size and shall be installed approximately three feet above the ground. 3D, one abovite plant shall be placed on each corner of each building end, total of two plants per building that face, faces Lillian Way for a total of four abovite plants. Number four, the applicant, each of the future tenants of the contract at Tradesman Spaces must conform to Section 2230 Use Regulation Schedule of the cover zoning bylaws as well as other provisions of the zoning and general bylaws and requirements of the cover fire department. Five, prior to the issuance of a certificates of use and occupancy, any outstanding balance of the review and inspection's deposit account shall be paid. As-built plans shall be submitted to the town's engineer and permitting department in both electronic and hard copy form prior to the final inspection. And C, in accordance with Section 3180, which is compliance of the cover zoning bylaws, the town's engineer shall inspect the project as to ensure it has been completed in compliance with the approved site plan and its conditions. And the appeal of this decision must be filed pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 117, and should be filed with, within 20 days of the filing of this, of this decision with the town clerk. So, anything else that anybody wants to add or delete? All right, seeing, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special permit on Two Lillian Way for a Craftsman-Tradesman building with conditions as noted.
I'll make that said, motion.
And I'll second that.
All right, so, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And just to note that I'd spoken to... And just to note that I'd spoken to John Gasky, and he said that he would abstain and let Richard take his place. So that was unanimous amongst the voting board members with one abstention. All right. Okay, so then I do have a, if we could sign this, the changes that we made, I can make, but we do have a signature page if you want to sign this tonight just to get it out of the way. I don't know if Ellen want to just bring this around. Just sign it.
Richard's going to sign?
Yeah, just sign it, and yeah. We'll pass it around. And if, Ellen, you could just take care of, hold that for me till the end of the meeting so I don't lose it. I gotta bring it back tomorrow. All right, so we have another minor modification, no, we have a public hearing continued on the application of Bayberry Dunes LLC requesting a special permit pursuant to section thirty-five hundred, thirty-five seventy, fifty-three hundred of the Carver zoning bylaw. It's located at Two Lillian Way in Carver, Mass. Assessors Map forty-nine, Lot sixty-two dash two, for a special permit to exceed the number of signs and signage dimensional requirements in the general business district. And so, I just want to, just want to say that, let me look, I do, I do have conditions here. And I know that, I just, just want to say that, and I can go through the conditions and then, you know, anybody can, we can modify them.
I just had a question before, before we go to that. It says, was your directory sign supposed to be facing north, towards Lillian Way, north on Main Street, or?
Like pointing towards like where you'd see it coming down the road, or is it pointing towards the dump?
It's going to be perpendicular to Route fifty-eight.
Yeah, the wording in here, we had, the attorney had reached out to Jim. You're going to see it from both ways. It's a, you know, two-sided sign, just like every other sign on North Main. So you'd see it driving one way, you'd see it driving the other way. You'd have the tenants on both sides.
So is it, it's going to be facing Lillian Way and?
Yeah, North Main.
And North Main both ways.
The same way the sign was faced the day you came out and did the, the site walk where it said sign. You could see it from both sides.
Yeah, so one side is facing the Quiky Mark, and the other side is going fifty, down fifty-eight.
Yes, okay, yeah, it's not facing Main Street.
No.
No, no.
And that's where the wording, the wording says that, you're right.
Right, right, that's, that's, because I understood-
You wrote to Jim and said, hey.
I just understood it differently.
I've changed that.
All right.
Okay.
You can go through, see if I did a good job or not. So, uh-
Yes, so you can see it.
So I just, just want to say, we had a couple of things, I think, they said Mr. Shea wanted the, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think you wanted a total of eleven feet from the ground to the top of the sign.
What you had in there was fine.
Okay.
It was, it was more than-
Yeah, and I just want to say, then we had a discussion, and I didn't, I couldn't quite figure out what happened at the discussion about the lights being, and this one, the lights are going to be at the bottom, you're going to have-
Landscape.
Landscape lights, and they're going to go up on either side of the site.
Yes.
All right. I took a, I took a drive through town, eleven-thirty at night, I think it was last week, just to see what signs were lit and what signs weren't. So as I was driving, this was just before eleven, I see CVS go out, I see Shaw's go out, and so I waited till like quarter past eleven just to see what signs were still on. So tractor-trailer was still on. So this was around eleven, quarter past eleven, eleven-thirty. Silo Marketplace was on, Honeydew was still on, Carver Dance Studio was on, Mama Mia's is on, United Parish is on, Deacon's on Tremont Street is on, the Craftsman Tradesman Building, the new one on three, three oh nine Tremont Street, that's still on at eleven-thirty. So I imagine these things are on till probably all night long. Kitchen Design on Tremont Street, that's on, the old Benidorm and Ellis School, and Dave's Convenience Store has a sign out there, and those lights are on it. So what I'm saying is, is that, is that I can understand, so there are still lights on buildings around, and, and one of the reasons that a lot of the lights are on these signs, I think, is for like advertisement of the building, I mean, of the business, you know. But I can understand also people maybe wanting to have the light shut off at a certain point, say like eleven or, or whatever.
The bylaw calls for half an hour before the business opens and a half hour after they close.
Yeah, sometimes though, when they have varying date, you know, they might be open late one day and early the next day, and, but I mean, these are all the, these are all the signs that are all lit up all night long. And then there were still a lot that were shut off at eleven. So I'm saying, you know, maybe we should be reasonable if we go with this, this shut-off thing, we could do it at ten or eleven or something like that.
Ten o'clock is fine, yeah.
Yeah, because the other thing I was thinking of is you got a Craftsman Tradesman building here. I mean, who knows? I mean, one guy might leave and, and close his bay at four. Another guy might be still working there till ten o'clock at night, you know, so. But it, and it also helps the, the business owner to have those lights on to, one, to show that there's a Craftsman Tradesman building there, and two, to display the businesses that are there.
I would think security too, you know.
Well, some of the buildings, you know, had security lights on and things too, and we do have, we do have, you know, buildings around town that, that have, you know, tractors or, or building materials outside, like tractor-trailer. They have their supplies outside, so they do have their lights on for security, but, but this was, this was just the, the, these type of signs, you know, the, the signs that just advertise the businesses.
Might I recommend six-thirty AM to ten PM at night?
Well, I mean, they're going to go on when it gets dark. I don't see that we have to, have to do anything when, when they come on, but you can say, yeah, ten, ten at night, the lights to be shut off. I, that, I think that's reasonable, so. But I often wondered, you know, how many signs that were on at night anyway, you know, so. So anyway, okay, so this is a public hearing. I'd like to close the public hearing if somebody wants to speak. Seeing no one, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Cornelius Shea makes the motion to close the sign hearing for Bayberry Dunes LLC special sign permit for Two Lillian Way.
Do I hear a second? Ellen, okay. Okay, Mr. Shea made the motion, and Ellen Sidillo second, for the record. Those in favor, and I think, were you going to, you were going to let Richard? Richard have it, yeah. Okay, because he had been at the site and visited. Okay, so those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that was unanimous. Okay, so that's to close the public hearing. Now here's the conditions. So a directory sign shall be placed perpendicular to North Main Street. The applicant shall install the sign approximately ten feet back from the existing stop sign located at the intersection of Lillian Way and North Main Street, and situated in accordance with section thirty-five fifty, which is the site obstruction of the Carver zoning bylaws and as approved by the building commissioner. Any sign illuminated shall be provided by external lights uplighting the sign from landscape below on both sides of the sign. And then four, I wrote this in, I, I don't think everybody got this, it was just, I added it this afternoon. Four was top of the sign to be no higher than eleven feet from the ground, and number five, lighting to be shut off by what time?
Ten PM, I thought. Six, six-thirty AM to ten, ten PM?
Okay.
Is that, is that okay? It's, it's a little longer than what we had discussed before, but. Did you want it later, is?
Can we do eleven? Can I request eleven? I'm going to tell you, I, another point that wasn't brought up by you, not only is it illuminating the tenants, it actually illuminates the address for EMS. That is another consideration. It says Two Lillian Way at the top of the sign.
That's another thing I forgot, in, in, you know, whether this affects this decision or not, but I used to do emergencies for National Grid and, and the gas company, electric company, and a lot of times I'd be going out at night. And I'd be going all over the South Shore, cities and towns, and to find that you're going to a business area like a business park, and to see no signs, no addresses on the buildings, it's just awful. Then I'd have to start making calls, see if I was in the right area, but to actually see a sign lit up with the, the street number on it or whatever, I mean, I go, wow, okay, this is the place, you know. So it is important for emergency, any kind of emergencies. In my case, it was gas and electric emergencies, but for EMS and, and police and everything else, so. I mean, that's just something for everybody to know, for a person that did it for eight years.
I don't have a problem with eleven o'clock.
Okay. All right, so lighting to be shut off by eleven PM. All right, so those are our conditions. Anything else? So I'll entertain a motion to approve the application of Bayberry Dunes to Lillian Way for a special permit, sign permit, with the conditions as noted.
I'll make that said motion.
Okay, so Kevin Robinson made the motion.
Cornelius Shea will second it.
Okay, Cornelius Shea, second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And then so Mr. Gasky let Mr. Deion vote. All right, thank you. And then if we could sign this, I'll have to go to the office tomorrow and then have them make those changes. If we could sign this last sheet now. All right.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
All right, so the next is on the application of North Light Realty Trust requesting site plan review and special permit pursuant to sections twenty-two hundred, twenty-three hundred, twenty-three thirty, thirty-one hundred, forty-three hundred, fifty-three hundred, and other pertinent sections of the Carver zoning bylaw. It's located at One Marion Drive, Assessors Map twenty-one, Lot four dash four, to construct two new seventy-five hundred square foot warehouse office buildings with associated driveways, parking, drainage, and landscaping in the industrial C zoning district. So let me see, what have we done? We've done a, we opened up the hearing, and then we did a site visit, and then, let's see. Then we, then we had another meeting after the site visit. So we're here tonight to possibly close the public hearing and to vote approval with conditions, and I do, I do have conditions here that I could read. But before we do that, let's see, we can close the public hearing, then I'll just open up if there's any further discussion by planning board members. Is there anyone in the audience that has any comments to make about this project? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for North Light Realty Trust, One Marion Drive.
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second that motion. Cornelius Shea second that motion.
Okay, so Ellen, and then Mr. Shea seconded. Okay, let's vote, and I think you, Mr. Gasky, you weren't going to vote, going to let Richard vote on this one, or? Did you, did you, you weren't on the site visit, were you?
Not on the site visit, no, but I've been here for-
Okay, I mean, it's up to you. You make the decision if you want to, if you want to vote. That'd be fine.
Right.
So are you going to vote?
No, you need, you need a decision right now.
I need that decision right now, yeah, the night's dragging on.
Oh, okay, I thought we were just voting to close the public hearing.
Okay, we did the public hearing. We can, we can talk, you think about it for a second. Is there any comments by any of the planning board members, or do you want me just to go through the conditions first? Go through the conditions? Okay. Okay, so the conditions that, that we come up with are, one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, a true copy of the, A, a true copy of the court decision as registered in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds shall be submitted to the planning and permitting office. One B, a draft access easement relative to the driveway connecting to the abutting property to the west will be provided for the planning and permitting office review prior to the issuance of a building permit. Is that on the plan?
No, the access easement is not on the plan. We're preparing it. I think Morris is working on the sketch for us, but, you know, that's consistent with what Fussin O'Neil had asked for in their comment letter.
Oh, okay, draft access easement. Okay, okay, so-
Right, you could see the, you can see where it is on the plan, it's just not denoted on the plan.
Oh, like marked by bearings and distances?
The location of it. For the future of erosion. Oh, yeah. I don't know where the sheet is. Do we have the marked reasonable location on the plan? Yes, I guess we do. But it's obvious where it's going to go.
So what is this easement for? Is it for fire, or is it for?
So I may buzz Artiano North Light Realty Trust. The easement is for the connection between the property which abuts, which I own, which is Commerce Way Realty Trust, and North Light Realty Trust, as we talked about on the, on the site meeting, for trucks and traffic to be able to go between the properties without having to go out on Plymouth Street.
Yeah, I remember, I remember you showing us, yeah.
Yes, yeah, where that dumpster was, at the bottom of the hill, correct. And honestly, it's just good planning when you can stay off of the street with things going back and forth.
Right. Okay, oh, so, so that was going to be a parking area also, right, or?
No, it's, it's, it's always been shown on the plan as a connection to Commerce Way. If you look right on sheet one, you can see it, it shows a double arrow. It's wide enough for two-way traffic. And again, it's just to allow, you know, traffic back and forth. So if we get a delivery at Marion Drive, the truck can just continue down to Commerce Way and-
Oh, okay.
And then the same thing, if they're over Commerce Way, they can just shoot right up the hill and go to Marion Drive without having to go out on Plymouth Street and make a turn and go all the way down around.
Yeah, I, I remember you staked it out. We saw it there, the radius is going out to the, to the road. Okay, thank you. The Board of Health will provide a variance, this is one C, the Board of Health will provide a variance to forego the requirement of a ten-foot safety bench along the north and east sides of the infiltration basin. And the D, one D, information regarding the applicant's right to construct the infiltration basin with the existing drainage easement, or a draft easement permitting the same will be provided for the planning board and permitting office review prior to the issuance of a building permit. Oh, so these were comments by Fussin O'Neil that you just haven't yet incorporated into the plan, okay? And so once they're incorporated in the plan, then the building, you'll, you'll get a building- then the building, you'll get a building permit, okay? So two, the project must be constructed as approved in the site plan. Any material revisions will require approval from the board as a modification of this decision. Three, the applicant is responsible for the proper operation and maintenance of the site during construction. Sedimentation and soil erosion controls shall be installed, repaired, and supplemented as needed. Dust control is required during construction, and the roadway apron is to be kept swept and clear of any dust dirt or debris. Four, the applicant will maintain a minimum of 25 feet of the vegetation along Plymouth Street frontage, which is what we saw when we did the sidewalk. Five, prior to the issuance of a certificate of use and occupancy, A, any outstanding balance of the review and inspection deposit account shall be paid, and B, as built plans, shall be submitted to the Towns Engineer and Planning Department in both electronic and hard copy form prior to the final inspection. C, in accordance with section 3180 of the Carver zoning bylaws, the Towns Engineer shall inspect the project to ensure that it has been completed in compliance with the approved site plan and conditions. And any appeal of this decision must be filed pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 117, and shall be filed within 20 days of the filing of this decision with the town clerk. All right, is there anything that, any planning board member? All I can say is I did talk to, we were supposed to have a... I mean, it's been quite a night. We were supposed to have our engineer here tonight. But he's on COVID protocol, so he couldn't, or he didn't feel well. And so he decided that maybe in the best interest of the planning board, he shouldn't be here tonight. He did tell me he looked at this, at the plans and had sent some final comments. And he thought that these last little things that he had sent were just minor alterations to the plan or minor requirements that he had asked for. And he thought in total, the project looked pretty complete to him. Do we have some variances with this, too?
They're requesting a lot of waivers.
Well, we do have waivers, but I believe in this particular instance, probably the waivers are consistent with the other buildings and that whole park. I mean, I was, well, we can go through. But I mean, you know, there are things in the bylaws that go good for grocery stores, CVS, you know, businesses like that that are along the road. But when you get into a business park and, or, you know, things like that, sometimes we waive these things because it just, you know, don't seem to be needed. And so, and I think, I mean, I would say that 75% of the business park is already built. And, you know, this is just the last piece. So this is gonna be consistent with what's been built out there. And for a business park, I must say, I think it's really first class and it looks nice. I think in order to get some waivers, you actually did some things that were different according to the bylaws. You did some extra plantings in areas that were better suited to the park and the way it's being used and everything. But, okay, so let me see if the waivers are here or not. Just, sometimes we go through the waivers. And usually, and our consulting engineer, Andy Glines, you know, they usually go through all these waivers. And, you know, they'll, if they don't like them, they'll say, you know, I don't think that this wave should be approved. But I believe probably in all the cases throughout the park, the waivers were said to be legitimate. So the waiver was requested for, from the 15-foot height limitation on light fixtures. The waiver was requested from the requirement. So how high are the light fixtures gonna be?
Yeah, this one, actually, if you look at Fussin O'Neal's most recent November 5th memo, they even questioned whether we needed a waiver because they said, you know, section 3166 doesn't clearly define it. It really applies to wall-mounted fixtures. In this case, you know, we're really complying under 3347. But they said, doesn't hurt to grant a waiver, is my interpretation. So 18 feet is the answer, long-winded answer to your question.
So is this on a pole or is this on a building, on a pole?
Yeah, these are pole-mounted, cut-off luminaries with low levels, .1-foot candle or less at the property line. So they comply with the dark sky bylaw, is my understanding.
So then we had a waiver was requested from the requirement for 100-foot landscape buffer for properties abutting residential uses. And that's because there's, it had already been previously approved for the 25-foot buffer, is that...
Yeah, I think that, I think Fussin O'Neal was saying the 25-foot in the one area of concern where, you know, there was across the street residential, they thought the 25 feet suffice. And that's that condition that you read earlier.
But at the time that this was approved, that's all you had to have?
So when the, in the, when the original subdivision, industrial subdivision was made, there was a decision in that, in that original planning board decision saying that that's where that 25-foot no-touch in the front came from because of the water butter across the street, which is 95% of this property doesn't actually go across to his property. If you look at the lot line, it's a very small sliver. It's really just a corner where you turn in. But that was in the original decision when they granted these four lots.
All right. A waiver was requested regarding the width and vertical clearance requirements of the onsite loading spaces. A waiver was requested regarding providing parking lot interior landscaping. So you have done landscaping in other areas?
Yeah, if you, what typically hap, if you look at this layout, there's really no place to put an island, if you will. It's just gonna end up being a place where the snowplow's gonna basically have to go around and make a mess. So what we've added is extra landscaping along the Marion Drive corner to conceal the buildings from that abutter. And as we talked about on site, if you remember, this property's actually coming down about five feet. So there's only gonna be about roughly 14, 12 to 14 feet of building showing. So that's, they're not even... From what I envision out there, I don't even, I think they're just about gonna be able to see the entrance doors on the front, just the very top of them from the street. So driving by in a car, you're really just gonna see the roof line and the facade, you know, the overhang that's on the front doors, so. And then we've added extra landscaping along Marion Drive, and then some extra landscaping along the abutter in the back, where he's already got those nice trees. We've added a few more trees there, so. You can see how that's all kept up now. But an interior island in this layout really makes no, it doesn't add anything.
Because you don't see from the street.
Yeah, you don't see from the street, and it's just gonna be another obstruction to the traffic flowing freely through the area.
See, a waiver was requested regarding parking, providing a parking lot perimeter landscaping buffer with the exception of the frontage along Plymouth Street. And you can see, it's just all commercial buildings there, so. But the landscaping that you put in is really nice on the outskirts of the building, so. A waiver was requested regarding providing landscape buffer areas adjacent to buildings on sides with the public entrance. So again, you've put landscaping in other areas.
Yeah, and again, that goes back to the existing park on Commerce Way that was a variance requested. Because the way that bylaw reads, and I agree with you, there's times when you need that separation from where you park to where you walk in the building. But this is not a retail setting. You know, this is a small business park. It's flex space. People pull in, they walk in the building. And it just, it just doesn't make any sense.
And for what it's worth, that wasn't our creation. That was Fussin O'Neal's recommendation. You know, they said they recommended the waiver because there's adequate perimeter landscaping. You know, the uses don't result in much need for public access entrances and landscaping adjacent to the building would likely result in reducing the width of the perimeter landscaping. So that was Fussin O'Neal's logic.
All right. All right, so we closed the public hearing. So so let's, we'll vote on this. And did you, did you wanna vote on this, John?
Out of the front.
Rich was out there.
Yeah.
Did you guys vote on closing the public hearing? Because I think, were you waiting for John to decide?
No, we did, we did close the public hearing.
You did, okay.
Yeah, we did. So okay. So entertain a motion to approve the application of North Light Realty Trust for site plan and special permit for industrial C zoning district warehouse office use on One Marion Drive.
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Kevin Robinson made the motion, and Ellen Sedillo, second. All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And then John is abstaining and letting Richard vote on this, so that's unanimous. All right, so we have to, before we leave tonight, we're gonna have to lock the doors, make sure everybody's signed all these. And we'll sign this. And you have the other one, selling?
Actually, he...
Conchay, okay.
I have the other.
Okay.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Take care.
Good night.
All right. All right, under topics not reasonably anticipated by the chairman within a 48 hours in advance of the meeting. You get a small, I got an email from Elaine Weston. And she was reaching out about the Town Administrator Search Committee again. So, and I guess what we probably should do is to vote on the person that wants to be on the search committee. So all I can say is that the search committee usually met like once a week, maybe sometimes twice a week, depending on what we were doing. Sometimes the search committee met at early hours, like 5:00, or 4:30, 5:00, or 6:00. Either for meetings or for interviews. So I'm just telling you that. So people will know their availability. I don't know who's interested in doing this. It was interesting to do, and I'd be willing to do it again if I was nominated. But I don't know if anybody else wants, would like to be nominated or not. So I'll just, I'll just put that out there. If anybody's interested to be nominated. If not, I'd be willing to take it on again. So do I hear any nominations?
And I'll second that.
All right, so anybody else? All right, hearing none. So Kevin. And then Ellen. All right, so I guess, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Okay. All right. So the next thing is, let's go to planning board member notes, and I'll just go, notes by the chairman. We do have, we do have candidates we've picked out, you know, working with Elaine Weston, myself, and who else. There'll be other people. But we're gonna start interviews Friday and into next week, hopefully. So hopefully, we'll have somebody. We'll have somebody picked out within the next week or so, if everything goes. I don't know how many rounds of interviews we have to go through. But I know when I did this before, I mean, I went through one round. And so hopefully, we'll have a new planning director. I'm thinking sometimes in December. Anybody else have any, anything they wanna say? All right.
Yeah, one thing, just for everybody out there in YouTube land. Just wanted to say, congratulations and good luck to the Carver Cowboys as they all go in to start their playoff rounds. As far as the three divisions go, all three divisions are in the playoffs. And so, good luck to these guys.
Go Cowboys.
Okay, thanks, John. So we have, so before us, we have, so we have the minutes. I don't know if everybody, I'd like to get some of these minutes approved tonight. Has, so let's go through the minutes of 9:14:21. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of?
I'm not sure I have those ones. Yeah, I don't have any minutes on me. Hey, I have October 12th up 9:14.
Well, we had these from our last meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, 9:14 is the one from, that we all had to verify, correct?
Uh, see, that was about Ironwood Renewable. That's a public hearing of Ironwood. Miriam Gorey, JCM Acquisitions, Minor Modification on 96 Forest Street.
But that was the one that we voted on, Ironwood, right?
See, was application requesting a special permit and site plan review to allow the construction of a large ground-scale mounted solar photovoltaic installation? Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the night that we voted on that.
Yeah, I reviewed mine, so I'm good.
All right, so entertain a motion to, to approve the minutes of 9:14:21.
I'll make that motion. To approve the minutes of 9:14:21?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Yes, okay, and then, so John Gasky made the motion. Ellen Sedillo, second. Okay, further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All right, then we have the minutes of 9:28:21. And that was application of Miriam Gorey, JCM Acquisitions. And we had 96 Forest Street, AD Makepeace, preliminary subdivision plan. So entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that said motion.
So Ellen made the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I, I'll have to abstain from this vote because off the top of my head, I can't remember them.
Okay. So, so we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And so, so it was all, okay, and so... So Connie abstained. All right. The next, uh, the minutes of ten twelve twenty-one. And that was, uh, see, that night we discussed the wall sign for Louis Nails, uh, wall sign for Remax on Seventy-three Main Street, uh, we talked about Windy Dog, Bog, Doggy Daycare, um, we talked about Ninety-Six Forest Street, Minor Modification, we, that was the night the Rockland Trust became, came before us for a sign, and this Bayberry Dunes, uh, came before us.
Oh, we need, uh, somebody's name in there. I see. Oh, Rob's, Attorney Rob, uh, Di Ambrosio's name should be in there, right? Mister, oh, Bayberry Dunes, no, I don't, I don't know whose name is supposed to be in there, it was left blank.
Oh. What, uh, what page is that?
Uh, the third page, Bayberry Dunes LLC Special Permit Located at Two Lilian Way, Mister, a principal is represented by Attorney Di Ambrosio.
Okay, Bayberry Dunes, I guess, Mr. ... Oh, uh, that, that had to be, uh, Artianno, I would say. He's the owner of the property.
Buzz?
Yeah, I would think so.
That's, that's...
Oh, Bayberry Dunes, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, this two, oh, that's, uh, it's the, uh, the, uh, the I's and O's.
There were two of them, but I don't remember.
Yeah, the brothers, yeah, who, who was the speaker. Yeah, uh, yeah, I know, it, uh, I'll find that out. Okay, I, okay, so that, that was, uh, yeah, the owner of the property. So I can make that change, I'll have to bring that down with all this other stuff tomorrow and go through that with Michelle and correct that. But, so, uh, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, approve the minutes of ten twelve twenty-one, um, with the, the, uh, addition, uh, to the blank space there for...
The principal.
Yeah, the, the principal, Mister...
I will so make that motion.
So Mr. Shea made the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Ellen?
Good at that.
Okay, uh, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I have to abstain.
And you abstained?
Yeah, I'm not, I wasn't here.
Oh, you weren't in there?
Yeah, I wasn't here for that one.
Okay.
I haven't received, uh, a copy of the, the last one from the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
No, no, no. I didn't have it, and, um, that was, uh, I talked to her, I talked to her yesterday, and, um, uh, Mary Ann?
Yeah.
And, uh, she, she didn't have it ready yet, so she was gonna work during the night to do it, and, um, I, I told her to wait till our next meeting, because we already had three to approve, so, um, and then she asked me if she could, she could do the meetings by video, uh, or tonight's meeting by video, and I said, uh, that would be fine if she felt comfortable with that, so, all right. Okay, so on that, so is Mr. Shea and Ellen and all, but, and then John abstained. All right, uh, so, our next meeting will be, uh, December fourteenth, and then, uh, I believe then the next one will be the twenty-eighth of December, um, depending, and, and hopefully we'll have a planner by then. So, uh, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Can you, Shay makes a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Shea, Mr. Gasky, second. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, aye. Uh, good night, everyone, and thank you.